It is indeed a pleasure to have this privilege to play here for you. And we intend to give you a very fine program. So just settle back, relax, and enjoy the moment.
Mic check. I gave y'all so much work to do. I'm like, uh, yeah, good morning, but also let me say something real quick. Australia Fuaga, I appreciate you heavy, seriously. Five months of subs? Say word. What's up? Good morning. I look like I'm in a different situation, right? I am. I am. What up, what up? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Australia Fuaga, always trying to remind me. Yo, what's the Linktree fam? Thank you. Not trying to remind, always reminding me. What's up? Ooh, I liked it. I liked it. I like that. Good hair day. How you doing? Stiff where? Okay, good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Um, yeah, it's like four minutes after. A little bit of a late start, but y'all got me. Lot going on and I wanted to come, I wanted to come correct. So a lot's going on today. I will be doing two live streams today. So, um, similar to some other, some previous live streams, I will be, similar to some other days, whenever there's an eventful or consequential city council convening, you know, my goal is to come to y'all live and direct and, and livestream city council with you as a community. And so this evening, around the time that city council convened, or slated to convene, you know how they do. Sometimes they, when they know they're discussing high-profile issues or issues that have garnered the attention of local stakeholders, like the BIDs, like the, the Business Investment Districts, the Business Alliance has drawn a lot of attention by not, just not by folks like me, not just, it hasn't, it's drawing attention for, you know, for a lot of us, not just black folk, not just activists, but local stakeholders. And so sometimes they like to, you know, run the clock out a little bit, you know, spend a little bit too much time on ways and means. Yeah, all that. So, good morning, L Cool J. Okay. I was getting scared because it still says just two people watching, but I bet you it's more than that. It's five minutes and 30 seconds into the livestream. Good morning. So whether you're listening or watching live or later, shout out, welcome, thank you. Let me tell you something real quick. I gotta start off with gratitude. I said it already with, with Australia Fuaga. Good morning Debbie, if I haven't said it verbally. Good morning, Australia Fuaga, if I haven't said it verbally. Let me just say, Australia Fuaga, you just signed up for five months of subs. I really appreciate you. What up, Megzi? What up? I got, I always talk about lurkers, right? And I, and I really do hope that you don't see that as purely pejorative. Of course, I'm, I'm engaging with a chat section that is comprised of a number of different people, right? People I know, people I've seen physically over the years, L Cool J, in activist circles or in, in community circles and spaces. Some people I've met through this journey of being a local, a full-time live streamer, for all intents and purposes. But there's also people I don't know. Some people who choose to keep, to choose to be a little bit more discreet, cool. Some people that's from out of state, but that really bang with the, out of state, out of country, that really bang with the content, that's cool too. And there's some people that, that are not invested in my ascension. There's some people who are looking for dirt, looking for grind, looking for, for things, right? What up, Kristi? Good morning. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you. Get your kids together. I ain't gonna hold you up. Be, be attentive. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you. I appreciate that check-in though. You know, there's some people that are not invested in my ascension who are also watching and lurking. So sometime when I talk about lurkers, I am trying to talk about that, that faction of folks who are just out here just trying to, you know, glean information, act like a friend and all that other stuff. And anybody who's an activist, who, who, who studies activism, who studies movement work in this country, we know that there's always, there's always an element that is not... What up, Stephen? What up, what up? There's always an element within that we have to prepare for. So like, but when I say lurkers, there are some people who just low-profile, who watch and who just show up at the most interesting times. When I just want to say, I'm not gonna say their name, but I want to say thank you to, um... No, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say their name. I'm just not gonna give the details. I'm gonna say their name. I'm not, I'm just not gonna give the details. And I'm not even, I'm not even sure if they're a lurker or not. Let me just keep it, let me just keep it on me real quick. Hold up, hold up. I just want to say, shout out Cassidy. Shout out, shout out, shout out, shout out. Cassidy. You know why. You know who you are. You know what you did. You know, you know how, like, seriously, and what really got me was, we went back and forth just real quick and just saying, "For all you do for the community," is what they, what they said. "For all you do for the community," you know, and, and I'll leave it there. I won't, I won't give too much. And I just want to say, thank you. You a real one. When I tell you I launched this fundraiser, it was twofold, right? The fundraiser is also to help y'all spread the word that, hey, there's a livestream going on. There's local news going on. You can support it right now at the ground, at the ground level, right? The other, the other part of it was to, of course, to, to, to try to build resources so that I can continue to come live, so I can continue to build out this content and speak to other people and maybe even support local content creators. And so I just want to say, I'm overwhelmed. We are a week into the fundraiser. I want to end it around this time next week. I know it's the holidays and that's gonna take us into Kwanzaa. But I really want to, I really am so overwhelmed. And if you haven't already, you've been thinking about it, please, when you give, it, it does a lot. I'm able to do more. And, and I just want to say thank you in advance. If you're thinking about it, you yet to pull the trigger, a lot, look, let me tell you this too. I'm grateful. I'm gonna start off with this grateful space and then one other thing, we'll get to business. We'll get to business. Okay. The reason why I'm sitting where I'm sitting is because my chair broke. So I'm sitting on a, a big old, big old cocktail on, 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 anyway. Also, I just want to say this too with the newsletter. Y'all, shout out to Australia Fuaga who dropped the newsletter, Linktree in the chat. If somebody, I don't know if you come in late, can you, if you can see the chat? I don't know how it works. But shout out Australia Fuaga for sharing the Linktree. I really appreciate that. The newsletter, you can sign up for the newsletter on the Linktree. The newsletter has been, let me just say this. It, it's causing me to want to kind of treat that more like a, a quick, you know, news-to-no type. Because y'all are opening, opening in it. Y'all are opening the newsletter. Y'all are, y'all are clicking. The open rate, the click rate, I was so, I was in this really sad state for a long time where all the people who kind of got acquainted with the, with my work in 2018, they just started to, like, massive unsub, like massive, just, and then here y'all come. The, the people who, the, some people, the mainstays who've never left, who've never wavered, who get it. And then there's this new group of people who are super engaged, who are clicking on links. I see Sheriff Graziano stop opening newsletter, I think, I think, I think. After I started talking about it publicly and she didn't know you could see her opening probably. But nah, seriously, on a, on a, on a real, let me keep it, let me keep it cute, let me keep it cute. Y'all have been really showing up in ways that don't just translate into dollars and cents. You've been showing up in ways that really help. So now I know that my newsletter is getting out there. I'm, I'm seeing what y'all respond to. I'm seeing how y'all really are gearing up to support local businesses that support content like this and messaging like, like that, messaging that comes from me. So I want to say thank you so much. I had to start with gratitude. I had to start with gratitude. I had to start with gratitude. The other thing I want to say is, um, this is just something that's been on my heart. And I've already been very clear. I've already been very kind of like, uh, I like, I like the word explicit. Y'all know that, right? Whenever, whenever I say explicit, imagine it's like Pee Wee's Fun House, start screaming. It's the ma, it's all, I always use that word a lot. I give a lot of words a workout. But, but, but I've been explicit about this one thing I'm about to say right here. Shout out, shout out. I'm trying to be delicate. When we, when, when, when things make national, when things, when news breaks, news that can potentially have adverse, an adverse impact on marginalized communities, black and Gulaguchi communities, when thing, when news breaks, when an injustice occurs, and when the press starts paying attention to things that impact black people directly, the way folks engage, the way folks engage with me sometimes is challenging. I want you to, I really want y'all to know that this is not a spectator sport. I said this before, like, if you, if you hit me up and like, yo, this injustice happened, depending on what it is, right? If it's something really deeply troublesome, I'll, I'll probably be moved to act. But I really need y'all to start, uh, moving and not just watch. It's one reason why I didn't follow Courtney and other area organizers' initial plans for Charleston Activist Network, which was supposed to be like, almost like a website that listed all of the social justice organizations in Charleston. I didn't want to do that, A, I didn't want to make a target out of people, seriously. I don't want to create a list of like, hey, here are all the woke organizations. Even before that term woke was, was, was popular. But the other part was, I don't want to make, I don't want to create a list, I don't want to create a website that lists orgs so you can just shop for social justice. I really do hope that the more you consume this content, that you are moved, you are moved to, to be activated. You are moved to move. And I need white folk to hear this very, very clearly. Please, this is not a spectator sport, sport, sport. I am not a superhero. There's a lot of things that I lift up that go, that, I don't even have the crickets no more, that just get crickets, right? I am one person. Sometimes what I say can get some traction. At this point now, Charleston has, Charleston has, I'm in the cycle, it's a cycle. I'm in a cycle now where Charleston is pretty much tired. They have like Mika fatigue. And so now the drowning out, like, there, there was a time where, okay, you can't ignore her. She's in the Washington Post. Her daddy's on the front page of the Washington Post. You know, she's in the New York Times a few times. Like, there, there was a time where it really was different, but now it's just like... So, so like coming to me, like my, my Instagram is jacked up. I can't do shit with Instagram. Like, I can't do anything. I don't even know why. I don't know what I did. I didn't get any warnings. But like, my, my point is saying that, like, my, my abilities are limited. My capacity is not infinite. And anytime you think that you need to come to a black person to flow the message or to advance a cause, please think twice about their capacity. Think twice about what they, what they potentially could be going through personally and whatnot. Just think about that. Keep that in mind. And also know that black people fighting and speaking up always has consequences, whether you see it in real life or not. There's always a consequence to a black person stepping out. And I really need to start seeing some, some white folk and some, some folks with influence and some non-black POC really step out and, and raise, lift up a voice and, and actually move in a way and not just tap the shoulder of BLM. Whenever the house is on fire, don't just tag BLM and me and everything. And then I, no shade to anybody who tagged me yesterday, because it's quite the opposite. But, um, don't, don't tag, don't tag me. Don't like, like, think twice about that, right? There's rules of engagement to this. There's rules of engagement. What up, April? What up, what up, little mama? All right. So I just want y'all to keep that in mind. All right, let's transition. I know y'all were like, oh, Mika, it's eight seventeen, come on. All right, just again, again, I am, my chair broke. Pay now, pay later. You wanted to buy a cheap chair off Amazon, Mika, and that's what you get. That's what you get. All right, let me switch it up. Let me switch, wait, wait, hold up, hold up. Neat dog voice. Hold up. Wait. Hold on one second. Let me, um, before I tell y'all all my business. All my business, okay? Let's get it right here. Boom. I sent out the newsletter. Shout out to y'all. I know I sent it out a little late, but it's all good. Okay, here we go. All right, switch it up. Let's get to it. Ah, ah, ah. So you got the newsletter this morning? You the real MVP. You the real MVP if you got the newsletter this morning, right? So today on Mic'd Up, we're gonna talk about city council, big prep. I did invite somebody to talk, but they, they didn't hit me back. They didn't hit me back. So, um, there's a truck parked outside my window. Y'all know how I get whenever there's a truck parked outside my window. I'm gonna be a little distracted in case I gotta throw something through the window. But nah, if you, shout, I did invite some folks, but I didn't hear nothing back. But that's all good because we're gonna look them up right now. So, um, city council, we've been talking about the business, um, the Business Investment District. We've been talking about the Business Alliance a lot. Good morning Dee. Um, you know, we've been talking about all of that. And so tonight, city council is, it's on the agenda. We're gonna get to that in a second. I just want to show, go walk through the newsletter this morning if you got it. If you don't got it, why are you waiting? And if you're saying, well, I don't like a lot of newsletter, you want this one. You want this one. Go ahead and just unsubscribe from Fashion Nova, unsubscribe from the goalie nutrient, um, the goalie, um, Ashwagandha gummies, unsubscribe, I'm talking about all the shit that's in my, unsubscribe, you know, to, you know, all the, all the skincare. Just go ahead and make some room for, make some room for Charleston Activist Network. All right, this is the newsletter you want. It's not, it's not any spam. Even though I've been reported for spam several times this month, it's never spam. All right, so we're gonna be talking about city council and we're gonna get into the museum drama. That's not new. It's not new. But I'm glad that there's a story about it. Of course, um, the preeminent writer of all things black culture, Adam Parker is on it. It's actually a good piece. It's long, but I read the whole thing. All right, so we're gonna talk about the, um, the International African-American Museum and its current drama and catch some of y'all up because some of y'all don't even know. Yeah, I mean, this is what I'm talking about when I say black people be talking. We be talking and y'all don't like, sometimes y'all mainstream, y'all. Mainstream don't be listening. But I, I'm gonna say something though. I'm, I'm gonna say something right now and I really do hope that, um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this with as much loving, loving accountability as possible. First of all, I'm gonna give some, some more recognition. Shout out, Site C Shop. Site C. Site C, you a real one. You keep showing up in this space. I had to include just the, I just had, look at Megzi over here. I had to, I had to include just a screen grab of their latest post. If you got the newsletter, you can tap on the post later. I actually also screen grabbed their stories before they expired because I believe that it's, it's at the 24-hour mark. So I screen grabbed their stories where they encourage people to engage. I want to say shout out to you. I will, I'm, I'm, this is where the loving accountability comes into, right? So I'm gonna go to the, I'm gonna go to Site C's Instagram. Not with Site C, not Site C. Not Site C. So, and I'm not gonna show the person's name. I'm gonna do that, that, I'm gonna do that. But if you go to the comments, if you go to the comments, right? And this is not me sicking anyone on anyone. This is not that. But this is what we, what we're not gonna do in 2021 going into 2022. We're not gonna feign ignorance. We're not gonna play this all shucks, I didn't know shit in 2020, in 2021 going into 2022. I was disappointed, and I mean this sincerely. I was sincerely disappointed to see local stakeholders who know better ask, submit a question that's really not a question underneath this post. It's not even inflammatory. It's subtle as hell. But this person knows that that's, don't ask, don't feign ignorance, especially knowing the, the position that you once held. And, and, and I think that, that there's something, there's responsibility that comes with rocking this mic every morning where perhaps I could have private conversations with folk. But being that this was a public comment, if this was in my DMs, it would be different. Being this is posted publicly, I just think that when we gaslight Site C, when we gaslight the community, I, I, I get offended. And so I want to say thank you to Site C for not just making this post, but for routinely showing up in this space and making it plain. Y'all know that's what, that's my currency, is making it plain. Making news and information accessible, demystifying, decolonizing, you know, centering the interests of those most marginalized. And I feel like I've been waiting, waiting, I've been looking, watching and seeing, and I've been seeing Site C show up in ways that are very real and very passionate. And, and, and yes, they are trying to make sure that they're not railroaded, for lack of a better term, pardon me. Railroaded or pushed out of Charleston because that's exactly what, this is the type of business you want to see speak up. A small, locally-owned, you know, shop, you want to see them. You want to see them speak up and use their popularity, use their platform to ask this very easy, easy and, 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 um, an important question. Whose city is this? Whose city is this? And to have a local stakeholder feign ignorance and ask, what do you mean? You know, you know what they mean. Don't play. And you know, ever since Site C went public with divesting from the CVB, you already know what time it is with Site C. Anybody who really fuck with me like that knows, like, has, there's so many people who I'm in community with who come to me about a positive experience with Site C, right? So my point in saying that and bringing that up is that we already know who Site C is. We know what, we know their politics largely, not, maybe not completely. But we know, we know their politics. So when you in the comment section kind of like asking disingenuous questions, I'm gonna look at you with a screw face and be like, yeah, come on now, you know better than that. Consistent as fuck, L Cool J. Consistent as fuck. Okay, so the stories, okay, so the stories are still there, so we can actually still rock with this. Okay, so yesterday, they, they tagged me on this. It was cool. So when I was saying earlier, don't tag BLM and me if, you know, without, I wasn't talking about them at all. We, with this gang gang, so they fine. But they sent, they, they, um, they had these posts and they did make it a highlight. That's why it's still up here, duh. They, um, so this is the post from yesterday. It's regarding the agenda. They, they on it. I got, I downloaded the agenda as I often do. And, um, yeah, so they downloaded this, they gave prompts, they made it very plain. Yes, it's, uh, it's the week of Christmas and this is exactly the tactic. This is the week of Christmas. But, but the city council meeting Tuesday has two items on it that really are important, right? Please read the following. Full disclosure, without giving you too much information, I had a conversation following the livestream yesterday regarding tonight's meeting. So I will be live streaming this evening. I will be live streaming this evening. And you can, you are invited. I will send out another newsletter this evening. Okay, now, now I'm getting aggressive. Like, I didn't sign up for two newsletters in one day. But I will be sending out another newsletter later on in the afternoon reminding folks that I will be hitting the live button here on Twitch this evening. And we will be watching, we will be watching very closely. Whether or not we can stop anything, whether or not enough people signed up for public comment yesterday, that's yet to be seen. And you know how they like to get cute with public comment anyway, right? Especially around unsavory decision-making, right? Right, right, right. Let me see what you're saying in the chat. Yeah. Yeah, that's okay. You can watch later. Oh my gosh. You can watch later. I feel fine. I don't know, I just get froggy. Right, Megzi, watch party, come on. I know it's Christmas, but honestly, I don't, I don't do the consumer Christmas thing no more, except for my mom and my daddy. So I ain't, ain't no shopping and I'm single dingle, so ain't no, ain't no cooking and nothing like that. Even if I had a man, we, Trader Joe's, heat and serve, fake and bake. What? Just put it in a nice casserole dish. They not gonna know. They not gonna know it was frozen. I'm the queen of fake and bake. So, yeah, 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 yeah. So anyway, um, I'm sorry. So city council tonight, this ain't interrupting my holiday week. This is, to me, this, this is a holiday. So let's go. And that's what they want you to do. They want you to be distracted. That's what they, that's when they, like, they're ushering these policies and shitty-ass ordinances and whatnot. Like they did when I was, you know, in the airport heading to Newark, Newark, New Jersey. Like, they know what they're doing when they try to usher this stuff in. And see, again, look at how they move with haste and intention around things that they want versus the interest of the people. And there's a lot of questions there with the city. So like, like Site C says here, here's all you need to do after reading. If you didn't make the deadline, it's okay. Because you know what? If you didn't sign up, if you didn't sign up for public comments, because you remember this too, remember, we gotta be, we gotta be, we gotta be multifaceted in terms, and how we respond and react, right? So knowing how they're, they're prone to even curtail and to limit public comment and learning, also understanding how they, like, the technology thing component also allows for them to like, oh, well, I didn't get, oh, we didn't see, oh, I don't have them, they didn't sign up. They didn't show up. I said hit the pound button. All that technical stuff also kind of plays interference. Shout out, shout out. B Man, thank you for gifting Mikey a sub. Thank you so much. I appreciate the support. But, so, so even though like we're past the time where you can submit, oop, we're past the time where you can submit comment and whatnot. Let me hit play. What you can do, let me see if this goes next. Yeah. What you can do is, because the special commission is on the agenda. Okay, I gotta switch up the cameras for this one. I gotta switch up the cameras for this one. Sorry for clearing my, clearing my throat. Always on my, so let me, let me, let me, let me. All right. Shout out to, um, the people who I'm in community with. Shout out to people invested in my ascension. Shout out to people who are trying to do their best within the system, even though I don't always think that that, that is possible to be like the spook who sat by the door kind of situation. Like, I don't always think that that's a viable option. Right? I got you Nicole. I got you. And I got you, um, Megzi. I'm gonna read y'all's comment when I put my glasses back on. Shout out to, to all y'all who are trying. Unlikely, unlikely co-conspirators. I have a lot of those. But I just want to say those who, if, if you have been hitting me up extra, extra, extra heavy lately and like, appearing to be my friend, understand that I always know when that's happening and like, you can chill. Like, I'm not stupid, right? Don't get me to go out here and jump off, jump out the window on an issue. Like, I already, I know. I, I know. Right? Don't do that. Don't do that. And for those who don't know, my currency is not what people think. It's never money. It's never money, it's never men. That ain't gonna, you mean, if I ever get caught slipping, it ain't that. It ain't money and men is, 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 is doing the most. It ain't money, ain't men, it ain't power. That's not my currency. And I ain't gonna sit out here and let y'all know everything or like what, what I'm prone, like what, what my weaknesses are or what my, I'm not gonna outline that. But just, just know that, yo, if, if, if you've been sent by the ops, I could smell an op a mile away, even if I act like I don't. Let me just leave it at that. Looking out the window, looking real op-y outside, huh? Knife talk. Where my little mama at? Drop them knives. Knife talks. Looking op-y outside. Oui. Please stop ops. Please, please. I just had to say that because I'm just, and you know who you are. If you're not an op, then don't let it go. Let it fly. But yeah, so the special commission is on the agenda. Shout out to the homie who put me on yesterday. I kind of already knew because the agenda had dropped and was amended, but the agenda had dropped. The, the agenda had been amended on the 17th, the agenda for city council tonight. So shout out to the homie though that put me on game. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So shout out to the homie though, that put me on game, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. Let me put my glasses back on and read the comments, okay? Nicole, you said you did submit a comment, right? Yeah, celebrating your daughter's birthday tonight, oh, do your thing. Yeah, yeah, read about tomorrow, mhm. Watching city council meetings by yourself is lonely. Yeah, and Omicron, like, I'm, yeah, it's not even an option for me to show up with Omicron. Honestly, I've been really, really bummed out. I got personal immediate family members impacted by Omicron right now, and so it's not, it's real in the field. B Man, you said, is there a public hearing on the commission? I think public hearing are only open, are open for anyone to comment, right? And that's the thing, B Man, thank you for lifting that up, because that's the, thank you for lifting that up, because that's the other part too, like, you can comment during the, the public hearing part. Like, we saw that when Erica Coakley, remember, remember during, at the Daniel Island? I think it was Daniel Island, city council meeting, Erica Coakley spoke twice, right? So there are two, so public hearing, we'll read the agenda together. Let me see, L Cool J, he says, I do have to say that my earlier tech trouble while attempting to speak at an earlier meeting was deflating, it was. Felt orchestrated, and I know you know how to use a damn phone, landline or otherwise. Like, I know you know how to, you know, I remember when I messed up, I messed up because I just couldn't hear, right? And it was a lag, and I was doing too much, I admit, I was distracted trying to livestream and comment. But I know L Cool J, I'm very confident in your abilities to come off mute and talk. So, I forgot about that, but yeah, yeah, yeah. Nah, I don't need you to come over little mom, thank you. Joy, you said you're speaking my language right off the rip, good morning, yeah, 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 good morning, Brian. Right, 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 yeah, just, thank you Dee for the warm thoughts, appreciate you, thank you. Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna send out, let me see what y'all asking, good morning. Yeah, I'm gonna livestream tonight, I'm gonna livestream tonight, thank you for helping each other out, understand. And we gave Site C some, some shine right here. So the special commission is on, is on the agenda, right? So we're gonna watch that as well. I honestly feel like they know, they know how important this is, they already know the public is behind it, they already know the volunteers who made up these subcommittees are behind this. They know already how important it is to make this permanent, so we'll see, right? This next one, it says, I understand that the timing and political climate this summer, summer slash fall made it difficult for council to move forward as we believe you truly wanted to do. I ask that you now please approve this first reading of the report and work with council member Sacran, council member Gregory, on additional changes before taking charge, so that they giving you the script. Site C was giving you the script on what they're saying. Here's item two, this is important, I'm glad that they, they put the special commission as item one. Not to say that, you know, just, I appreciate that, I think that was, that showed some sort of self-awareness. So here's this item two, creating a business improvement district, a bid along King Street. You can express opposition to this item in the, in the same comment submission, yep, alright. Shout out again to Site C for doing this, I'm just gonna, I know I'm going back and forth reading and not reading, but thank you. Alright, so why? Read the article, it's linked in their bio, we read about that, about gentrifying impact of bids. Oh wait, I had to go check it in the bio, here's some things we will say, feel free to use, use it in your own words, like, y'all don't understand the power of them saying, putting their name on it is huge, huge. Especially when you have folks in the comment section really acting like they don't know what's going on, right? Alright, it says, business improvement districts drive up rents, price local businesses out, yep. I said this yesterday, like, not saying like, just couldn't, couldn't, couldn't agree more emphatically, right? And pave the way for hotels and chain stores. What we say about Target? What we say? You gonna have a Foot Locker, Starbucks, and all these national other businesses just replacing these other? That's why I'm really like, yo, Low Country Local First, it's time for you to step on some toes. And maybe y'all stepping on toes behind the doors, but y'all gotta do more of this. Like, people gotta know that you're actually working, and again, I got love, like, real love, like, like, you need me to roll up love for people who work there, like, real love. And like, I just need them to show up better, and that's as nicely as I can say it. But people are watching y'all not show up the way that Site, and Site C should not be alone. There should be, there should be something tantamount to the bid composition, the Business Alliance that was formed by all of these hugely influential and wealthy women and men, and whatnot, you know, leaders of business, you have a literal billionaire pushing this bid through. You have a literal billionaire, or two, but one that went on, went on wax, Navarro, Charleston Place, right? Literal billionaire, and you know CCF is somewhere in the mix too, you know that. And the Chamber of Commerce, you know that, alright? So, so like, we need, there needs to be, Site C shouldn't be, Charleston Activist Network shouldn't be, BLM shouldn't be out here as like this, like, you know, this dope, this dope and radical like community Voltron. Like, we should have, you know, we'll form together and like, you know, form the sword, the head, all that. We'll do what we gotta do, but there should be a local business institution, a local business group network that actually helps us formulate these arguments and stand up for the little guy. And not just around programmatic things, not just around events and looking like we're doing diverse stuff, and looking like we're supporting minority businesses, we gotta actually start showing up in that space. And I don't see that from Low Country Local First. And so I think that I've given them a pass because of my relationships, but that's no longer, that's no longer gonna be moving forward, I just, I've seen too much, like, I've heard nothing. And so we need to start, now, I mean, I say I heard nothing, there's been op edge and stuff over years and stuff, but in terms of like what this really portends for the local business landscape, I think, I think we already know what this, what this means, what the, what the community Voltron, what this, that would kind of be kind of dope though. I ain't the head though, I'm the, I'm the cat, like the old school Voltron. I think, wasn't there a cat that was like separate from the, I'm like, no, they all were cats. They all cats that formed the legs and the arms. Let me stick to Captain Planet, I'll be, I'll be Gaia. Alright, let me stick to that, let y'all powers combine, but anyway. Nah, I just, I just need, I really do need these local stakeholders to do better and show up and do this work, because this is gonna have consequences for Site C now. Site C now, to make a bad joke, Site C now is maybe in the crosshairs right now. You could argue that when they came out against the CVB, they probably were like, okay, persona non grata. I know this from, from personal, for a personal fact, like, like businesses like Low Country Street Grocery and XBB, like, they refuse to play the game with the CVB, or play the game with like Charleston Wine and Food. Like, there's, there are certain local businesses, like, nah, fuck that, I don't like your politics, CVB, I don't like that I have to pay to play, right? We'll make this work on our own, right? And so, shout out to those local businesses that actually speak up and say things and rub, rub folks the wrong way. It's time that we start doing that, I'm not the red cat, I'm not the leader, nope, I'm Gaia. Spirit of the earth. Let me stop, alright, so yeah, they outlined, be serious now. They outlined the ramifications of a business improvement district. Business improvement districts again, drive up rent, price local businesses out, and pave the way for local hotels and chain stores. Number two, business improvement districts are a tax-rich, are a tax-rich people levy on themselves to get richer, come on, come on. Business improvement districts are a tax-rich people levy on themselves to get richer, come on. Come on, let's go. Can I just tell y'all, I've had so many candid conversations about how some of these, like, some of these people that's on the cover of all these magazines that, that, you know, they didn't earn, they didn't earn no spots, right? Like, CVB be putting them, be positioning a lot of, lot of people. I'm looking at you gardening gun, Southern Living, or any Conde Nast publication, any advertorials, right? You go to the city, you go try to meet with somebody who worked for the city, see what's in the waiting room or wherever, wherever space that they work out of, right? See what's in the lobby, right? All those, all those well-placed advertorials, right? Anyway, number three, I went on a rant. Number three, bids deputize private paragovernmental organizations to keep streets clean and safe. What did I say? What did I say yesterday when we said that, when we saw that part, when it says they're gonna have like a safety, a security arm? So you deputizing who? So now these kids, so now the cops ain't gonna be arresting the Rose, the Palmetto Rose peddlers, or, you know what I mean? The cops ain't gonna do, they gonna send the renter cops? They got what kind of power? Are they armed? Like, what we doing? What we doing? And I'll be damned if I see a husky, and I'm saying, I'm a husky chick myself, if I see a husky middle-aged white man tackle another black kid like we saw a few years ago, we gonna have some problems, we gonna have some real problems. And I don't care if I'm the only one in the street, right? We gonna have some real problems with that, right? So who we deputizing, right? And why don't we, why, why is, like, this is real cute, this is real cute, and I don't mean that in the way you think, right? I got you, I got you B Man, I got you. So let's go ahead right here, alright, and so they do much of what we talked about yesterday, right? And who, and is this who you want deciding who is and is not welcome on King Street? They all, like, and this is real, this is real, right? Right? Where's the diversity? Just having men on, and that's how like, when you talk about men in minority-owned businesses, this is how white women kind of skate through the minority portal, right? Like with affirmative action, like with these business grants, right? A lot of these wealthy, we've been talking about this for years, this is where I wanted to go, this is where I was trying to go to. We've been talking about this for years, and yesterday, a couple days ago, I had a conversation when I was talking about the advertorials, I got lost in my own stupid story. But like, we were talking about like, all these people who are lifted up, who, how do I say this? You've got big business interests, who do a lot of slick shit. So a lot of men with money, men with like maybe they're C-suite dudes or CEOs, they'll prop their, their stay-at-home wealthy white wife up, say, hey, go get this, go to get this minority-owned, get this minority business grant, go get this, go get that. That's how, you know, you see the milk bar, when I was talking about the, the white boutique owning glitterati, those are the women, those are the women who are married to wealth, and they go in and get, get permits and start businesses, and you think, oh, I'm a, I'm a small, I'm a, I'm a mom, I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I, no, 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 you're a stay-at-home, you're a wealthy woman who has maybe a maid, a housekeeper, your kids have access to all types of care, babysitters or tutoring and whatnot, you're a woman of means, right? And you didn't just bootstrap this shit, your husband bankrolled this, or your husband knew how to work the city, right? So I'm saying all that in that, like, we're seeing, we're seeing more of that kind of movement of like, like, oh, well, it's a woman, so you can't, no, 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 this is the problem, is that white women disproportionately take up a lot of space that was really meant for a minority business, that's really meant for a POC business, or Gullah Geechee descendant, or Gullah Geechee, a Gullah Geechee business. But they do that, right? And that's, I learned that, I learned that, where did I learn that? Being a blogger, being a blogger, I'm like, damn, she takes all these great pictures, she's got that really fancy camera, she's got access to editors, and, and I'm like, you know, I'm like, oh wow, she really just must be working harder than me, right? We both got the same 24 hours, and then you start like, and then I start talking to the homie, and the homie was like, girl, please, her husband did this, or that girl's husband did that, that woman, she got a divorce settlement. Like, we, we really don't know how this, how, like, it's really, really interesting how business works here in Charleston. B Man, you said you had, you had to read that like five times yesterday, bids are a tax, yeah, it kind of the way they wrote it, I got you. Privatized law enforcement, hello, same facade, right? Who was giving, exactly who was giving them power, right? It's not us. And just like with the Friends of Gas and Creek, we know there was way more public sentiment opposed to filling the creek than in favor of it, but they passed, they still said, nope, we're gonna move ahead and we're gonna, we're gonna fill the creek in. And it wasn't until we sued, you know, and I can't speak too much about it, but it wasn't until we announced our lawsuit via scalp that folks really saw, oh, we put a, we put a break to, we put a halt to some of that, at least temporarily, right? But like, we know public will show up in opposition to something, they're still, they're still steamrolling, so why am I bringing that up now? So if you weren't able to sign up for comment, go ahead after today's livestream, because I'm not gonna be on extra long in the morning, because I'm coming back in the evening, go ahead and call your council person, call your council person, email them, you know how slippery they are, right? They don't have numbers that really lead to them, right? Some of them are surprised that you called, call, email, put them on blast, tag them on Twitter, tag them on, yes, tag them on Twitter, tag them on Instagram, tag them on Facebook, and if they say, well, that's not, that's not appropriate, the fuck is not, you a public, you are a public servant. And if your numbers are not working, and if we call you routinely and it goes to voicemail, you never pick up, you never call back, you never send even a form letter back out acknowledging receipt of a message, then we gonna tag you, we gonna come to you as many, as best as we know how. And don't let anyone ever tell you that social media is not a viable means of not just activating a base, but of also achieving certain outcomes. That's what social media does, it democratizes, it democratizes the media landscape as well. It, it, it can potentially amplify the voices of those who aren't heard, who don't get the meetings, who aren't allowed in, who, who get cut off after 30 seconds. Social media is a viable means, is a tool, it's a very real tool to activate a base. And so whenever they say, well, oh, Mika is trying to get Instagram clout, I wish the fuck, I'm 40 fucking one. I don't even, no, I honestly don't even fucking know what clout really, really, really is. And I'm not saying that like to be obtuse, I'm saying like, like, come on now, that ain't, that ain't even how I roll, right? You know, when I was out here rolling around here with, you know, the state, with my quarter tank of gas trying to get home, you know, and transforming money from my savings to my checking, you know, that's not clout chasing, sweetie, that's, that's me trying to create change. Don't let anyone diminish the power of social media, right? And if it didn't matter so much, why they always watching us? If social media wasn't shit, why you got the whole sheriff's department and Seahawk Surveillance and national, national security and shit watching us? If we, if social media is not a big deal, why you, why you opening my newsletter? Why you, why you screen shooting my shit and sharing it with your people in the private messages, right? If it don't mean nothing, right? Right? Mhm. Yeah. Yeah, nah, that's really affected when you asked about the Rose kids, have I done? Yeah, I mean, I've spoken at length about it on radio, podcast, but I can definitely revisit it, for sure. Yeah, I definitely have, I've spoken out at protests, but I don't know if I've done a dedicated livestream on the Rosebearers. Good morning, Ally. Yeah, so we're gonna be watching closely, they need to know that we're gonna be watching tonight. So what they do, they know that not only are we going to watch, but I'm livestreaming it, so whether, because I couldn't, I gotta, if y'all can find that, the Daniel Island City Council meeting, I went through it three times and I could not find the Daniel Island, the one that went off the rails where they, they didn't set, where they didn't set Amber up for success. If y'all can find that YouTube video, I don't, I don't, I don't ever want to assume that the city took that down, but all, because all their thumbnails is just the city, the city crest. So you can't, you know, even if you hover over it on YouTube, you can't really, you can't really, you know, see. I don't see it though, I saw Meminger, I saw Ways and Means, I saw a lot of other stuff, but I didn't see, I didn't see the Daniel Island meeting anymore, right? What did Megzy say? Let me see, Megzy said something? Because Mikey was responding to Megzy, I don't know what. Genius Megzy, totally do that, I don't think they know me yet. What did Megzy say, let me see? I don't see it, it was earlier, okay, alright. It's just the lawyers, Dee, she don't get, all the lawyers get that, sorry, sorry, Ally, not to say you're not special, all the lawyers get that. It's just, you know, oh shit. It's either this, if she comes on, if you, you get that, but when I see a lawyer in the chat, Steven, Savannah, Suzanne, Savannah, Susanna, that's your name now, Susanna, Savannah, it's done, it's done. Alright, yo, use somebody else's time, oh, wait, hold up, Mikey. Let me drink my tea with lemon and honey, because this throat. Ooh, ooh, a lot of honey. I wanted more tart than that. Use someone else's time, Mikey, you kind of stumbled on something that I want to say. Also, if you, if you're a white person or a person of privilege, and you, like, you can always say, you know, because they'll read your name, and then like pass it to, and then like pass it to, especially in person, it kind of works that way. Pass it to someone else, let someone else speak on your time, because they're more than likely, if I try to sign up for something, I'm not saying that they've not ever, to my knowledge, scrubbed me off anything. It's kind of quite, quite the opposite, like, if I sign up, they, they know how public I am with it. So if I sign up for something, they don't really scrub it. If Marcus signs up for something, they don't scrub it. But there might be some other voices that get silenced for whatever reason, or even mine. So think about transferring, you know, your, you know, your, your time to speak. Use someone else's time, Mikey, I appreciate you saying that, actually. Buenas dias, Kia, how you doing? How you doing? Alright, yeah. Pro tip, call in, keep track of the names that get called but don't respond. Yeah, yeah, yeah. At the end, okay, thank you for saying that again. And at the end of public comment, claim to be them. Ooh. Damn, I don't even want to read that out, oh, shit. That's a real, that is...
Now, listen! That's called motherfucking bars!
Yeah. Ooh. There's literally no way they can, like, stop that, though. Like, no matter, we just, we just released a pro tip. But it's literally, oh, I've done it, like, when I, when I couldn't get through that one time, I just bulldozed my way through because the prompts is not, like, it's not like a, it's not like an old switchboard where, you know, like, it's like, they can't, once you come off mute, like, unless they change the settings or something, I don't know. But, um, I bulldozed my way through somebody else's comment. I'm like, oh, no, no, I'm here, uh-uh, mm-mm, go, right? So just, just try to think about that, yeah, yeah, yeah. It is genius. Yeah. What you mean, yeah, 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 you got it, you got it, okay. Oh, hold on. Oh, you found it, you found it? Let me click it. I couldn't find it.
Councilmember Brady Keen?
Yeah, okay, good, good, good. Seventeen. Why couldn't I find it? Thank you so much, I would make sure, and I said that, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't assume that they took it down. I just couldn't, I want to download this so I can, we gotta definitely use this as a clinic. And if they, if they do some BS tonight, we might revisit this so we can point out ways that they tried to stymie or stifle public opinion. So we'll, we'll get to that, right? Let me go back and pull, lift up out of, so they made it, yeah, they made it a, they made it a dedicated, uh, they made it a dedicated story. I mean, you know, story profile. Let me go to the, let me go to SiteC's link tree. Learning the truth about, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ooh. Ooh. SiteC, look at you. Come through, y'all see this? And y'all know I got friends at Pratt, so you know, it ain't nothing for me to call the homies up and just get, let them tell you from a scholarly source what these things do, like, seriously, right? You can, and I'm gonna go back to FOGC, Tiff District as well, and we can look at some of that, too. But you can't talk about what's going on without lifting up urban planning, ooh, I didn't want to click on that. But, um, so this is from, go ahead, SiteC, GothamCenter.org. This is written in September of 2020, September 3rd. It so says, "On September 16th, 2016, Crane's New York Business ran an article titled 'Shaping a Neighborhood's Destiny' From the Shadows.' The article highlighted the work of Business Improvement Districts, otherwise known as Biz, y'all, in New York City, right? At the Story Center stood Dan Beederman, founder of Bryant Park BID, bid, alright? And in the early 1980s. The story notes that Beederman successfully organized local property owners and businesses." See, this is what, this is what Low Country Local First should be lifting up. This is what they should be doing. Not, not trying to curry favor with the CVB, not trying to walk the line, not trying to keep funding. Y'all should be, find funding, other funding sources. If your funding sources don't want you to speak truth to power, then it's time to find better friends. I'm being dead ass right now, right? In the early 1980s, right? And check out, think about, think about Riley, too, right? Think about Riley, thank you, little mom, if I didn't say thank you, too, for that. Yep. Are the only, hold on, Kia, you said, are there only Tiff Districts downtown? No, it's like nine, I think, nine on the peninsula and two others are not downtown. I think that's what our research showed, right? Right? Alright, so in the early, in the early 1980s, the story notes, Beederman successfully organized local property owners and business owners to provide the blueprint for this much-held urban governance strategy. Let's see if we can find a, um, let's, let's close out that video now that I've watched it technically, alright? Shout out to also, too, y'all, all my, I'm caught up, I know it was a lag, I'm caught up. Please make sure you go subscribe if you haven't already, subscribe to Charleston Activist Network's YouTube channel. If you can never, if you can't watch Twitch live for whatever reason, if it's just not the UX you like, if you don't like the user experience on Twitch for whatever reason, go ahead and catch up on YouTube. But let's go, let's see if we can do some business, Business Improvement District, let's see, I have not... I'm putting gentrification in there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right? Because they think they're cute. Okay, ooh. Leaders of New York, and this might be, this might be propaganda. Leaders of New York's biggest business improvement districts on challenges they are facing, that sound like propaganda. What is a BID, I don't know. This is what happened, and this is what happened when neighborhoods gentrified, this is a business improvement district. And remember, like, things like neighborhood revitalization, words like urban renewal, those are all words you need to watch out for, Business Improvement Districts as well. Let me see. I don't know. This feel like propaganda. Let's see, let's see, let's tap on it real quick. Jesus Christ. Let's see what this is. The Real Deal, anything that says The Real Deal sometimes makes me think that they know the Real Deal.
One of the most essential people in, in career...
Hold on.
Partnership, welcome to everybody. Before we get started, I just want to remind our viewers that we do bring these TRD Talks Live to you for free, but we depend on subscribers, so please go to therealdeal.com to subscribe to all your favorite real estate and political news, therealdeal.com. So welcome, everyone. So I want to start with the obvious, which is you guys run three of the, you know, largest Business Improvement Districts in Manhattan. And Manhattan's under a tremendous amount of pressure these days. But to give, I'm afraid some of our viewers probably don't realize exactly what a bid is. So I want to start with Dan, because you were probably one of the most essential people in creating...
Hold on one second, I just want to see something. So this is the organization that SiteC relied upon for that document, the Gotham Center for New York City History, right? So this is the organization that they relied upon with that document that we're gonna go back into and read. I wanted to see if there's anything specifically, I guess I would have to go back to, oh, okay. I'm not, I'm unfamiliar, I'm unfamiliar. Three years ago, okay, they don't really, they don't really keep up, okay. They don't keep up that much. Got a couple months ago, 11 days ago, Reform Resistance. I was really hoping to see something about the bids there. But let's go back, I want to go back to that article, actually, I think this is really important, okay? Because this is foundational to, like, our understanding of the issue, right? And I'm just going to turn this, y'all, ooh, y'all might have to see my big, y'all might have to see my big screen TV on the wall behind me, it's just going to have to be. But I got the screen set up different, alright. Alright, so let's go back to this real quick, how y'all doing? How y'all feeling? Hey, Joni, how y'all feeling? Y'all with me? You still tracking with me? Thank you. Alright, the prevailing narrative asserts that public and private partnership, PPPs, public and private partnership, hello, does that sound familiar? Somebody call honor, public and private partnerships institutionalized through bids saved the city from dystopian conditions of the 1970s. Remember, the 1970s in New York City is a time that I draw upon a lot because I'm a fan of hip-hop. What does that mean, Mika? What do you mean? Well, hip-hop was literally, these are not my words, this is the words of a scholar whose name escapes me right now. But hip-hop was born out of a burning Bronx, literally. That's when you saw the emergence of that type of messaging in music, right? It was the, it was the planned shrinkage, it was the urban renewal, it was all of that. The starving out of these black and brown, black and brown boroughs and areas and neighborhoods, starving them of resources, starving them of a lot of things, creating a lot of sprawl, not sprawl, excuse me, creating a lot of... Hold on one second. Okay, okay. Okay, sorry, 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 somebody texted me. But, but that's where hip-hop came from, and that's when you start hearing people speak truth to power about, like, hey, can't get jobs, can't get adequate housing, can't, my kids don't have adequate school options. All of that happened around the 70s, that's the birth, the birth of hip-hop, and that's important. Because hip-hop is not just what has been, what has been turned into, it's, it always and will be of the people, born of the people, and had a radical political message with it, right? So institutionalized through bids, saved the city from dystopian conditions that they created in the 1970s, right? And rampant crime, so to speak, homelessness and drug, drug use undermining the viability of the city's public realm. We see that a lot with the CVB, they tried to use the protests, they tried to use the rebellion as, you know, some sort of like, hey, this is it, we gotta create this Business Improvement District because of the, because the glass that broke and we repaired the next day. We gotta do it, we gotta do it, we, we need this, we need a full-court press of economic, economic pushing, right? Backed by a billionaire, alright? So, yeah, viability of the city's public realm and business districts in the context of federal policies that has systemically drawn the life out of central cities, followed by federal retrenchment. Urban visionaries and the downtown, downtown bids that they led were framed as, framed by bipartisan consensus. We're seeing that right now. Consensus as savior organizations, come on. Let me read that again more smoothly. "In the context of federal policies that has systematically drawn the life out of central cities, followed by federal retrenchment, urban visionaries, and the downtown bids they led were framed by bipartisan consensus and savior organizations." But, capital B, but, but what exactly are bids? Technically, bids represent a variation of special district governance. Bids make it possible for city governments to delve, excuse me, to devolve the power, to devolve the power to manage local assessments or taxes to a sub-municipal organization. A sub-municipal organization, okay? So, 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 when... This is, like, when I talk about the dark money, when I talk about CCF being a funnel, being a source of dark money, and I talk about CCF's outsized role, and not just philanthropy, but their outsized role in education, their outsized role in building capacity for local businesses, black and brown or whomever, right? CCF has an outsized role, hold on one second, hold on one second, hold on a second. For being you, dog, for being you. You know, you know, I appreciate you, it's about time for me to start showing it more. Texting me, like, he know I, you know I'm live. But, but, but CCF's outsized role is something I spoke about largely, right? But not just in philanthropic circles, not just in education, like, and to, 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 to the education advocates who lift up this question, I often, like, what makes Ben Navarro or CCF or Darren Goss uniquely qualified to start weighing in and shaping policy around education? Well, the same can be said, and, and, and so, so, so why I'm bringing it up? I'm bringing it up because we tend to let organizations and philanthropy step in where government should be, right? And so even here, when I read this, taxes in sub-municipal organizations, like what SiteC lifted up, they're gonna deputize, deputize certain entities, right? To act on the city's behalf as opposed to the city in the goddamn council we elected. I didn't elect Helen Hill, right? Helen Hill ain't on that, on that city council. I didn't elect Ben Navarro. Ben Navarro ain't on that council, but they are. But they are. They are. Right? So, so what I'm trying to say, I think, is like, like, that they are now conditioning us more than they've ever had. They've been conditioning us for a long time, a long time. They've been conditioning us to expect more from, from organizations, from philanthropy, from these talking heads, and expect more from Shahid, from Gregory, Sacran, go on and on and on, right? Right? Alright, and so you're deputizing and you're giving disproportionate power to people who already have disproportionate power. You feel what I'm saying, right? Let me read the chat, because y'all are saying stuff. You live for the sound effects. You do? Well, you're gonna love this sound effect, Kia, because this bitch shit is...
And it has a white refrigerator, I was like, ooh, god. Not a white refrigerator, girl, please put your shoes on, let's go find you a home.
This shit is so ghetto, this shit is ghetto, white foolishness, please, stop with the white nonsense. And when I was saying earlier about, like, this ain't a spectator sport, this is what I mean, though. Some of y'all are in these rooms when some of this shit is talked about. Some of y'all, it's happening over Breon, it's happening over a nice glass, a nice glass of red, a cab. It's happening, you know, at halls, during a brunch, it's happening on a cotton dock, on Boone Hall, like, a lot of these conversations are happening. And some of y'all are in this room, are in these spaces, and you hear people be flipping about these things, and y'all gotta start challenging that shit in, in real time. And why I'm moved to say that is because I've been in spaces more than just that whole urban electric thing debacle led by a plantation owner, Seb's tea. Led by, my goodness, I sip the damn honey, like, what you want, throat, come on, throat, sorry. Like, so not just the urban electric debacle where they want to talk about how they're the leaders in, in, leaders in, in, I don't know, building design and development and, you know, and they center developers and plantation owners. That, of course, that underscored, like, okay, well, oh, when white people in the room and they think it's just them, they don't do shit. They don't, they don't challenge shit, they just roll with it, they just like access, right? So they already confirmed what I already knew. But I've been in more spaces since then, either on the phone or other places where, when something happens, white folk don't say nothing, or people with privileges don't say nothing. Black, and some black business owners who enjoy proximity to whiteness, y'all think, y'all don't say nothing in those rooms. And I'm not talking about gross jokes or using the N-word, I'm talking about, you know, some, some real bullshit, right? Some of y'all don't say nothing, alright? And y'all gotta start speaking up, y'all gotta start speaking up, y'all gotta start speaking up, speaking of the devil, speaking of the devil. Alright, um, so, so that's it, I went on a little bit of rant, I know. Joy at my throat, though. And I feel perfectly fine, do not have Omicron, I am boosted, I am blessed. I have been in this apartment, I did not go anywhere yesterday, I am terrified of catching Omicron. Somebody close to me said they lost their sense of taste, you know, y'all know I love to eat, like, come on now, I can't be eating gummy bears and can't just be tasting like I'm eating air. I can't, I can't. That's the number one reason why I don't want to get Omicrons, because I want to eat and taste the food. I can't lose my sense of taste, y'all, I can't, I will, oh my god, I'm not ready to lose that 10 pounds. Alright, let me get serious, let me get serious, let me get serious. I know y'all want me to be like, raising hell, but y'all know that ain't good for my blood pressure. Alright. Alright, so we stopped that sub-municipal, I'm gonna read it again for effect. For those who are new, hi, this is what we do, alright? Bids make, I'm gonna read it again, for effect. "Bids make it possible for city governments to devolve the power to manage local assessments or taxes to sub-municipal organizations, which hold decision-making power over how these funds are spent. And we gotta keep our eye on Sacran as well, because Sacran does have business interest. And Sacran did get caught up at the early, at the onset of the, oh, shit. And the former leadership at Low Country Local First and I had a philosophical disagreement on this thing, so, so Sacran proposed at the beginning of the pandemic, Sacran proposed, shout out to Michaela Porter, who's no longer with the Post and Courier. She had a knack. Michaela had a knack. He proposed to do something that I was like, oh, no, oh, no, 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 no. Affordable housing. Yeah. Michaela got, Michaela got him good on this one. Yeah, this wasn't, this wasn't a good look. So, so don't think, I know Sacran been talking right and acting right, and I'm gonna say this, too, Sacran and whomever, whoever, all of them, they got the prerogative to do, to make the decisions. whoever, all of them, they got the prerogative to do, to make the decisions, you know, based on like, you know, their best judgment and all that other stuff. We just gotta make, like, they got the, they have the, the right to have their opinions, but they work for us. And I think that's something that always gets lost with, with, with some people who, who are busy like rah rah, supporting their favorite candidate. You can be cheerleading if you want, but the dynamic is they work for you. So I don't know, like, I mean, and I do think that bosses should cheer, cheer on their, their, the people that they lead. I do, I believe in positive reinforcement as an incentive for either in- increased productivity or whatever. I don't really believe in increased productivity anymore, but you know what I'm saying, for desired outcomes. I do believe in positive reinforcement, recognition, right? So I do believe there is, um, a time and a place to cheer on Sacran, but I also think more, more often than not, any leader, and y'all are leaders, right? Y'all are leaders. You lead your homes, you lead your communities, you lead however you lead. You all are, you all are leaders. Even if you don't think you are. I do think that it's a time for leaders to say, hey, you know what? I don't think this is in my best interest. This is, this is not really what I, this is what I think these outcomes might, might lead to. I need you to revisit this issue. I really need you to, to think twice about voting yes for something, right? And I'm not saying, I don't know Sacran. I have not polled. I have not called. I have not texted. I have not tweeted. Um, I'm just saying that when I saw Sacran do this back in, in twenty twenty, right? So Charleston City Councilman pushed this small business loan program that he could benefit from. Now that is Michaela being extra spicy and you know, you know. We love a spicy woman. Oh, alright, so this is what, this is the crux of the issue though, right? So, uh, a city, uh, Charleston City Councilman proposed using money set aside for affordable housing to instead help small businesses feeling the effects of the coronavirus pandemic, including possibly one of his own restaurants. He got caught out there. It's okay. You know, what, what did Don, Donnie McClurkin say? We, we fall down? We can get back up. Let's see. I believe in redemption. I'm an abolitionist, right? Alright, so then it went on to say, um, tr- uh, Councilman Sacran, who owns a restaurant in Charleston and one in Mount Pleasant, said he may seek money from the very program that he was proposing to, 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 to fund or have funded, right? He would seek money from the program. So, uh, Michaela used to sit up in city chambers, y'all, and report this shit. I used to see it with my own eyeballs. Uh, Councilman Jason Sacran, who owns a restaurant in Charleston and one in Mount Pleasant, said that he may seek money from the program that would fu- that would be funded by Local Development Corporation, um, and L D C, uh, if it was approved. He put together this last week. So what happened was it faced opposition because he did this quote unquote, "in secret." He didn't do this like with council and I guess the more powerful figures on council kind of like pulled his coattails a little bit, like yo, you got a little bit too much dip on your chip, alright? You out here with your friends, but you need to run this by us. That's kind of the vibe I got when you read the art, when you read the article. Um, but so not only was it like kind of formed a little bit, I think it was Jackson and Sacran and then they tagged in Low Country Local First and then Low Country Local First was like, hey, can you blast this out? And I looked at him like, you want me to blast out that they want to take from affordable housing, affordable housing funds to prop up business owners during the pandemic? I, I'm all for supporting local businesses, but we not gonna rob Peter to pay Paul, right? So the previous leadership, I want to make that very clear, the previous leadership at L L F, Low Country Local First, was out here sending out email blasts, talking about, hey, 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 let's, let's do this. I'm like, nah, what are you talking about? And then the argument kept, the argument kept, was this, like, let me see if I can find it. So, so yeah, this is, okay, let me just read this part. Let me just read it. He put, um, he put together last week a brainstorming session, right? With a handful of, of, uh, other city council members, um, behind closed doors, right? We, mm, mm. Uh, the idea was first discussed publicly Tuesday, at Tuesday's night, uh, city council meeting. Uh, Sacran said that he doesn't consider what he did, he's done, a breach of public trust. Um, file that term away, uh, in, in your, in your, in the, in your brain. File it away, breach of public trust, or states, uh, open, open government law. Uh, he said the process is not as important as the outcome, right? So he's saying he didn't break any, any ethics laws. He didn't violate anything, right? So, South Carolina Press Association attorney said, uh, what transpired over the past week shows attempts to circum, circumvent public input. Now that was where he got caught up at too, right? City council on Tuesday night punted on the vote, uh, punted on the vote to use the lawsuit settlement money earmarked for affordable housing assistance last year, so back in twenty nineteen, right? Track with me, track with me, track with me. Uh-huh, I, I track with me. Um, and I got you in the chat if you, if you saying something. Hold up. Um, this is, this is all gonna, I just want you to understand, like, so if you've got someone who is business oriented, if you've got someone who, um, owns businesses, right? Sacran is the co-owner of, of, uh, Bon, how you say it? Bon Bon Me? Southeast Asian Kitchen and Restaurants, right? And, um, a recipient of funding, uh, from, uh, from the L D C, right? Um, so, uh, to me, this, this is just his values. Now he's definitely, he could have changed, um, a lot of his values and whatnot. He could have, but he's one to watch. He's one to watch. Um, of course Shahid is one to watch, um, given his interest in business, given, um, given his interest in business, given, um, his wife's affiliation with West Edge. Um, Shahid, of course. You know, Mike, you gotta watch Mike. You know, you gotta watch, um, you gotta watch them all, but you gotta, you gotta keep an eye on it. I just wanted to look that up, that, um, this might be some part of the thought process there. I might be completely wrong. I might be completely off, right? Alright, let me see what you say. Oh no, Mika, you okay? You got, nah, I don't have no Omicron. Uh-uh. Mm-mm. I don't have it. Even if I had, I'm gonna deny it. Stay in this apartment. Uh-uh. Alright, I'm fine. It's just when you talk a lot, y'all hear radio people clear their throats a lot and stuff like that. They have a dump button. I think when you start talking a lot, just that happens. Um, this phone, yo. Oh God, okay. Just keep buzzing. People don't know what I'm doing in the morning. Alright, so I'm gonna revisit this though, but I do, I definitely want to, uh, kind of go, let me see, go back. And I wanted to see something, uh, something else, uh, some other prompts from the, uh, Site C's, um, Site C's post. I really do hope that Site C, somebody hit me up yesterday and said Site C would be down to join the show. I hope so. I really do. Maybe that was the buzzing. No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. Okay, read the article. So we, we're reading the article together right now. And you can use those words, y'all. Y'all don't like, but people think sometimes that they have to create, um, they have to be like wordsmiths or whatnot on, on some of this stuff. Um, no, they don't. No, they don't. They don't, you don't have to. You could be, you could be whoever you want to be on this stuff, right? Um, but, but sometimes it's about searching and reapplying the verbiage, the language from, from scholars. Like no one expecting you to all, to every, no one expects everyone to know everything. Like that's just an, um, an unfair expectation. So borrow the language from that article that we'll continue to read, right? So we already read this, drives runs up. Alright, we're gonna let that play a little bit. I can't. Every time I go forward, okay. Request the city council. So this is it right here. Uh, please request the city council not take a permanent action on the bid until more residents and businesses on, business owners have had the opportunity to learn about it. It's crazy how they usher this through, but they won't even accept the recommendations of, um, the special commission. Uh, special commission on, um, on inclusion, on equity inclusion and racial conciliation, right? So two things, support the S C E I R C and also express opposition to the bid, right? Shout out to them again. Shout out to Site C. I'm gonna close it out now. Shout out to Site C on that. Um, I appreciate that. And, um, going back to, let me see, so I put that in newsletter. Cool, cool, cool. We're gonna talk about, uh, oof, we're gonna talk about the, um, the AIM real quick, but we're not finished with this here, real quick. We, we gotta. Ooh, this is the museum, y'all. This, this is, this is African American museum. Is this the board or is this just, is this just a photo or is this the board? That's Angela from, sometime I'll be like, when y'all post for pictures, seriously? So when you work for political people, we gonna get to this later. We gonna get, we gonna get this in a second. When, when y'all like, so, so Charleston, hear me out. When y'all do something mo- momentous, when you do something historic, when it's a ground, a literal groundbreaking, right? Do y'all ever looking like, hold, timeout, let's make sure this picture look right? Do y'all, like, 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 yeah, shout out Lucille Whipper. Look at her over there. See, I didn't even, I didn't, my computer screen was covering her. Shout out Lucille Whipper, right? May she rest in paradise. But like, when y'all like, like Charleston, white people, like, and I, and I, I respect Angela Mack. I gotta respect her. I think that's Angela Mack in, in, uh, in, uh, front with the Gibbs Museum. You ever think like, hey, maybe I don't need to be in the middle of this picture as, as a white woman or white person? I, you couldn't find, even like, I see some black people over there. I'm looking to the, to the right. I know not everyone is gonna grab the shuttle, shovel and, and get seen, you know. But y'all ever think like, if you, if you promoting an African American museum, you ever think about like, how about the images not be majority white people in the picture, right? And, and, and indeed to your point, to your point, it's four. Bernard Powers over there, or is what, Bernard Powers is one. Uh, Lucille Whipper, two. The, the woman in the blue, I know she owns all those McDonald'ses. I can't remember, I can't remember her name. That's three. Then the guy right there, I don't know, I don't know the gentleman's name right there, four. So it's, it's five and, and the chick on the end, but it still looks, it just still, eight to five white people. Eight white people to five black people. And it's African American museum. Alright, we ain't finished with these bids though. I really want to find out more on these bids. Jesus Christ. Could, and all, and all, and all honesty, I was gonna talk about something totally different. And when this kind of broke out, I'm like, okay, just, so I'm not as prepared as I typically would in terms of finding information on bids and whatnot, but this is the, like, the most robust, the most like really dope source on it. So I'm glad, I don't have to do everything sometimes. I go, I'm glad. Alright, so let's, let's keep going real quick for a little bit and then we're gonna transition to the I A M, to the museum, right? Alright, usually bids are incorporated as nonprofit organizations. Usually bids are incorporated as nonprofit associations that receive and reinvest, and for, for those who don't know, the, the current bid is that, right? The current bid is that. Um, uh, the, the, the alliance is that, right? Usually a bid are incorporated, um, as a nonprofit organization that receives, uh, and reinvests, uh, the mandatory assessment levied on local properties in a geographically defined district. Originally the focus was on, originally the focus was on commercial properties, but increasingly residential properties. I know, I know, I know, I know. It's annoying. Wake up, wake up. That's, that's the last one for the next. I don't know. Nah, I'm lying. Alright, so, alright, listen, listen, listen. Originally the focus was on commercial properties, but interesting, excuse me, increasingly residential properties are being assessed as well. But bids operate in the shadows, right? Rebranding, restructuring, monitoring and policing, not just our downtown, but also our neighborhood commercial districts, right? Alright? Bids are also able to raise additional revenue by commercializing the physical space and brand of their districts, um, and taking on debt, right? Right? So this is when, when they talk about, you know, like, the debt, the, the, the debt aspect or who's being taxed, right? Taking on debt, alright? Um, bid advocates advance a policy narrative that cloaks the bid tool in ostensibly colorblind, public choice principles. Oh, we love a public choice. Ooh, public choice principles and liberal econ, uh, excuse me, liberal economic tenants, especially localisms. Like I said, cloaking in localism. You heard a lot of that local, local chatter. Shout out to Joy Buzz, just saw Facebook share Quinton's close up. Yeah. Yeah, uh-huh. Who, wait, who, uh, Joy, yeah, Joy, shout out to Joy. You sent me a text about that last night. Um, mm-hmm. Oh yeah, this is, we talked about that yesterday, being, I, I probably glossed over it really quickly. But oh, this is a nonprofit. Let's, let's just go to it. Actually, let's go back to it. Let's go back to it. Let's go back to, ooh, I was watching Gar, I was watching Fun Stuff yesterday, sports and gossip and skincare. Let's see, this is it. This is it. This is what we were talking about yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So you, you've got billionaire interest in whatnot. I want to go back to their PowerPoint. The beginning of their PowerPoint. It already, it already says everything that's been lifted up in this, in this, um, in this piece by, that was written uh, a year ago. Um, so this is what they say it is. This is who they say is. So this is it right here. We're gonna, I know y'all, I know y'all might be bored with this, but we gonna play again.
Vibrancy, additional energy, um, in the district. And then finally, what can we do or where is that champion, that voice? And, and more importantly, that inclusivity. So, you know, we have government, we have the stakeholders, we have the representative for, um, the area. In fact, actually, this King Street has three representatives on this, on this. And then what has it been doing leading up to this public hearing today?
Okay, well, let's listen to what he says right here. What it's been doing leading up to this public hearing? Alright, let's just.
And what has it been doing leading up to this public hearing today, um, in preparation for bringing the bid forward to council?
Revisiting this for the third time.
Thank you, Robert. Mayor, council members, I promise we're not gonna have an auction tonight, so, right?
Y'all know how that joke made me feel.
But a- a- as Robert said, you know, I think the, the business community, the owners and residents feel strongly about King Street as we all do. It's kind of a bell rather for the rest of our community. When things are good on King Street, our community is in good health and things are good. And so out of the last year and a half with COVID, with the riots that we had on King Street, it was kind of an urgency.
So right there, as someone y'all, some of y'all pointed out yesterday, when the whole use of the word riots already tips his hand, right? Alright.
To come together and working with city staff. Um, we established the Charleston Downtown Alliance, made up of property owners on King Street almost a year ago today. And over the last six months, especially the last.
And so I get that it's specific to King Street, but we also know that like not everybody in, in, like pictured there has a, like Kroger's is not on King Street. They're on Broad, right? They're south of, are, wait, are they on King Street? No, where's Kroger's? The C V B, like, like my, my, okay, the reason why I was bringing it up is because they could have courted other interests and lifted them up as leaders of this body, but they chose to say, hey, we're, we're comprised of, uh, property owners, business owners of King Street, which is probably something to keep black businesses out of the conversation, outside of Republic. What el- what other black owned businesses on King Street? Republic, I don't, I can't remember what else is there. Um, yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah, um, close to the, close to the, okay. It, it is. It's the, yeah, the other side, right? Yeah, close to the Apple store, right? Mm-hmm. What's up with the tech businesses, um, on King that don't say shit though? What's up with them? What's the one, um, blue, um? I've been up there too. Um, y'all know what I'm talking about. Is it Blue Ion? No. Ain't they still on King Street too with that, with that swanky pad up there? Blue Ion is Blue Ion? Yeah, Kroger's is on King. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I just thought it was like, I thought it was technically not on King. I don't know why I thought that. You see out where I shop? Etsy. Legit. Um, what's up with them tech businesses though? The one that's like over Apple especially, like what's up with them? They don't say shit? Right? Just on, oh please, if y'all haven't learned by yet, by now too, like tech don't equal liberal. Just, just because the dude wears vans and has a, has a, 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 you know, has bangs and, and, and must hair, doesn't mean that they're liberal. They wear a hoodie, a zip up hoodie, like, just know that too. Cause they've been, they've been signing on a lot of these issues as well. Yeah. Close the Catholic bookstore. What Catholic books? I don't even know what that is. Don't wait for that. I'm like, let that stay open. Is it local? I don't care if it stays open. If it's local, let it stay open. But anyway, they, they chose the, the leadership to look a certain way. This was intentional. Um, they, they don't have, and this is what really is offensive to me, is that they don't have, they don't have to have self-awareness. They don't have to be self-aware. They don't have to, um, be thoughtful and mindful or intentional in the composition of, of the leadership voices that they've enlisted, right? The composition of the, of the leadership and of the voices that they've chosen to come and, and rock the mic at city council. Um, and they've done this very quickly, just like they've done this with the ordinance. And I will say like the, like, I, I'm gonna be real. I hope it doesn't pass. It probably will, right? We got literal billionaires, um, championing this, right? And they did it in warp speed. Um, they should be read for Phil. City council should be read for Phil for, for moving with, with breakneck speed with this. And also one thing I peep when I had this conversation, it was like, yeah, tonight they also gonna bring up the, the special commission. I peep game on that too. Don't try to play me. Don't try to, don't try to, don't try to make the special commission permanent tonight to get the black people off your back. Y'all don't fall for that shit. Let me put the camera on my face. So y'all can see my, my portless skin. Don't let them play game on you like, oh, they gonna give us the commission and gonna make it permanent. And then, okay. We're not gonna get, uh, we're not gonna get upset. We're not gonna get upset because they, they made, they gave us this. Don't fall for it. It's probably the reason why they put this on the agenda. Remember the agenda is, to me, the agenda and the way that it's, 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 um, coordinated, um, during certain times for certain votes is strategic. um during certain times for certain votes is strategic, just like them spending an inordinate amount of time on the Ways and Means Committee preceding city council to wait us out, to fatigue us, to get us tired, to get us, you know, to, to make us tired. They, so they're not above playing games is my point. So don't think that, oh, oh yes, master, you've been good to us today, master. Thank you for, for making the commission permanent. Is it fucking funded? A whole year later, is it, over a year later, is it fucking funded? Did you hit up your friends at Google? Did you hit up your friends at, 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 at Blackboard? Volvo? You got literal billionaires in Charleston. You got a few slave, uh, for, excuse me, descendants of slave owners, plantation owners. Not saying that, you know, like did, did any of them run you a check? Did they fund it? I want. So even if you do make it permanent, permanent with what? Permanent what? Put together with sticks and glue like, like Elmer's glue and popsicle sticks? Like what's holding this shit up? Don't play with me. The, and, and we, we not, we, I'm not, no, I'm gonna speak for myself. I'm, I'm no longer satisfied with crumbs. When you've been promising us the whole pie for a long time. Right? So, so don't fall for the okie doke. Don't fall for the, nah, QB, QB sneak. Do not fall for it. Do not, do not fall for the Philly special that they about to run on us. Please do not. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so, yeah. It's, it's, it's um, it, it, just, just get ready for that. That's what I, I, I think that uh, I think that that's what's up too. Like, oh, we'll put, we'll, we'll make, we'll make a shit sandwich, right? We'll make a shit sandwich. Let's actually, I'm gonna let this dude talk, you don't need to see, um, you don't need to see that face, well, this is our third time visiting this content. So let's let him talk and then I'm gonna pull up, I'm gonna pull up the agenda and I'll mute him if I need to mute him, okay?
In constant communication with the city, we set out to put leather on the street and meet with and talk to property owners and business owners on the street. At your last finance committee meeting in North Charleston, we were hovering at 50% 51% verbal approvals of a, the concept of a bid. And uh today, we're over 55%.
Who's the 55%?
About 61% of verbals. So we continue to go out.
Hold, hold, wait, I gotta rewind that, I gotta rewind that, I gotta, y'all heard that? So this is where like, I think I've heard this, oh shit. He's saying he got like 55%. What percentage of what? If I polled two people and one of y'all say yes to something, that's 50%. You know what I'm saying? Like if I poll, if I polled 10 people and five of y'all say yes to something and five of y'all say no to something, that's 50 50. That ain't a lot of people though. You feel what I'm saying? I can manipulate percentages.
Property owners on King Street almost a year ago today. And over the last six months, especially the last three, in constant communication with the city, we set out to put leather on the street and meet with and talk to property owners and business owners on the street. At your last finance committee meeting in North Charleston, we were hovering at 50% 51% verbal approvals of a, the concept of a bid. And uh today, we're over 55% with about 61% of verbals. So we continue to go out and talk to property owners and business.
And so when you only ask those, if you only ask people that you're in community with, people who you're politically aligned with, you're going to get a vast majority, and that don't even sound impressive either, like 55% ain't a lot, like he lying, kid, he lying. He lying. I think that's the sound effect I need to put in there, because if I talk about politicians a lot, I need, I need, you don't got to lie Craig, you ain't got to lie. Mm hmm, he lying. Mm hmm. What Mikey say? I asked all my rich friends. Mikey. I asked, oh, leather on the street, what does that mean? Does that mean, that sound like an old timey detective movie, you know, like a gum shoe or something, leather on the street, what does that mean? Is that a gum shoe? Is that a, is that? I don't know what that means. It's carrot and stick, Joy, to your earlier que, your earlier comment, it's carrot and stick, they promised nothing, right? While lead us away from the real issues. The same thing with the police audit. Oh, we're going to admit to bias, no shit, we already knew that. Avery done already told us that shit with Cajun. We already knew that shit. Uh, hello? I'm in this black skin, the 365 24 seven, right? We already know. That, but see, when the police came out and said it, oh, okay, and then so what, what did it distract, what did I started, and I'm, this is why I'm definitely going to big myself up. Who started lifting up, well, let's, let's look at the use of force stats. Let's look at you not taking, not keeping video past certain amount of days. Um, you know, not, not keeping it on file so people can go revisit that stop. Let's look at you not turning on your body cam. Let's look at you not turning on your dash cam. Let's look at you muting your body cam, right? So don't, you can miss me, oh yeah, we, we, we got racist practices, we knew that shit. Hello? Slave, slave, you know, the, the slave patrols taught us like, we know what's at the root of this whole issue, right? So we know that police routinely, police, um, police routinely, law enforcement routinely, police black bodies, unfortunately, you don't have to, but they love that, they love to come out there and say, hey, we got this problem, pay attention to this, while they're really just concealing a larger systemic issue. Alright, so um, yeah, that's that. I wanted to get to, hold on, hold on, I, I'm too distracted by him talking. So I'm gonna, what I wanted to do is look at the agenda again. So we know, so to this, to earlier point about when people can participate and when they, when they may not be able to participate. Um, if participating virtually, um, so if citizens, if you sign up, so look, if you go in person, if you go in person, you can sign up at five. Hello? So if you, if you are positioned to go out, if you're going to be masked up and you're going to be safe and you feel safe, citizens may sign up to speak in person at council meeting until 5:00 PM, okay? Shit, you tempted me to go down there and sign up right now. I ain't even lying. Okay? So you can sign up. You got till 5 o'clock, but when you phone in, that deadline already passed, which I think that's fugazi, because they know they're going to get more participation with the call in. So this is, this is artificial too. You don't need 12, you don't need a, a 24, like more than 24 hour cutoff, early cutoff, like that, yesterday at 12 noon. That's arbitrary as fuck, you can't tell me that's not. Tell me what that's rooted in. Tell me what the, like, tell me why, why you need to cut off the virtual? That's probably arguably the easiest thing to manage. It's harder to, to read signatures and um, you know, have people sign up physically, it's probably harder to do that and keep track of that than it is to somebody caught, um, filling out that form on, on the city's website. So why do you need a 12 o'clock cutoff anyway? That's not, that's something else. So that's, that's that, they give you instructions on how to come off mute and then they're probably going to mute you anyway. Alright, so um, there's a lot here, but if we go to issue M. And so um F, uh, Act on Public Hearing Matters. Uh, Tom, uh, Tom brought that up early, public hearing, you could say some comments then. Citizen petition pa, citizen participation period will happen at right here at H. So um, so they're going to go through all of these amendments, you see what they're doing too? This ain't, this is, this looks intentional. It, well, no, no, this is, this is boilerplate, but. So they're gonna, they're gonna cover all these things right here and you're probably going to just like quick votes on this stuff. All this, I can't even, I'm sure this is a lot of the issue here too, but I, I, I just, I don't have the bandwidth or the range. Right? So, okay, so that, so at H, citizen participation period, right? After the, uh, the approval minutes from the seventh. Then down, you go down I, J, K. See this? See this? L. M. M. Here we go. So here you go, bulls, uh, bills up for first reading, you got the bid right here, M. And you got, damn, y'all, I didn't even, I'm gonna look at the other agenda and see something. So you got, um, so you got, you got this right here. So it starts at um, AM, ordinance authorizing the King Street, right? Bills up for first reading. And then you have the ordinance, uh, see, this is the bullshit sandwich right here. Um, they have an ordinance to replace chapter two, the code of city of Charleston, whatever, whatever, creating a permanent, and also um, one to watch is who brings this up, right? Who brings this up? Which council member's going to bring this up is going to be telling. Right? Watch who bring, who, who lifts this up. Right? And then that's at the end. See how it's at the tail end like that? So um, that's okay. I could take naps and be up and I'll be, I'll hang tough as long as y'all hang tough with me. It's fine. We'll do it together, right? So that's how they do, they bury stuff under minutia. Let's look at, um, let's go back and look at, uh, and we're going to switch to, um, the uh International Museum right now. Uh, because we're going to watch this tonight, we're going to watch it in real time, we're going to go through all of this, right? But let's go, let's go um to a previous. Let's go to the Charleston government. And let's look at previous minutes. Nicole, obviously, oh man, there was a huge thing that happened back in Florida where you're from about Target versus police, because Target isn't doing um cap, copaganda anymore or word. Yeah, they stopped that, that night out, I mean, what is it, America's Night Out, whatever? Bullshit, bullshit sandwich, Brian, you said. Exhausting the people so they don't hang out, exactly. That's okay. And that's what I want, like, look, seriously, when I go live, I expect y'all to be wrangling kids, getting the bath right, you know, telling Bobby to, you know, pack a book bag, I, whatever, right? Fictitional child Bobby. So you know, I, I'm imagining that y'all are very, very busy, right? Um, and that's what I'm trying to do is like, if you can keep one ear out, or you have the, you know, you have ear, earbuds in, ear pods in, headphones on, you, I'm, I'm expecting y'all to multitask and then when that time come, try, if you can hang on, then chime in, then listen up, then take notes, like that's what I, but that's what I'm trying to do is because I know how the city, D, to your point, how the city works to make democracy inaccessible, how the city works to make these, these systems so, so overwhelmingly hard to navigate, both in person and virtually. We know how the city does that. Either they do it um unintentionally, sometimes, sometimes it's just like, you know, tech gaps and stuff like that. Um, sometimes it's um, sometimes it's, it's, it's like, it's willful or like, like I tell y'all, sometimes ignoring something and letting it kind of like, kind of like spiral is also willful too, right? Not intervening when you could, right? Let's go to the, let's go to the meetings. I want to look at the, the, the seventh. I want to look at the agenda for the seventh, that's city council, I'm going to do that. Government agendas. So make sure you also, you know, uh, make sure you also get familiar with the city's uh website, which needs a, a massive overhaul, massive overhaul. But, you know, alright, so we're going to go to agenda. So city council agenda. Alright, so I'm going to look at the seventh. City council. Let's just look, it might, it might be the same, it might be just as dense, right? And it's the holidays, you know? Alright, A, B, C, D, E. Hmm, okay, it's, it's, yeah, it's kind of, okay. Yeah, it's a lot. A lot. Right? No bills were up though, let me see. No bills were up for first reading, well, this one, this one bill was up for first reading, let me see. So when did they talk about, when did they talk about the, 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 the business um district? Let's see, that was uh right here. So look, look, so when they want to introduce it, and I guess this is also how the procedure, this is procedural in terms of like where it's introduced, I guess? So public hearing. And the, a resolution pursuant to section yah yah yah, and this is on the, the district and the King Street Improvement Plan to be uh affected therein. So that was, that, that was a leadoff issue, right? Right? That was a leadoff issue right here, all of this is bid information. But it was, it was, it was upfront, it was during a public hearing. So I guess when you bring it up for a vote or propose it, I guess maybe it takes a different position on the agenda? Um, it felt like the approval minutes are up higher. Uh, let me see, let me see, approval minutes. I guess it's the same, let me see, the citizen participate. No, okay, so this is tonight, right? Public hearing. All of this. And then, okay, approval minutes here. And then citizen participation, okay, so it does precede citizen participation. Just keep an eye on it, just keep an eye on it. Just keep an eye on it. See if it's needlessly like just arduous, if it's needlessly arduous. Um, good morning Evelyn, how you doing? I would ask why they put important stuff, yeah, we definitely, right? So that's something to also talk, especially, especially tonight, it's very dense, it's very long, potentially, unless they're going to just keep saying I, all in favor, da, 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 we zone everything for business, we don't want any residents. That's an interesting, um, that's an interesting calculation too, in terms of like the outcomes from taxing, I don't know, taxation? So if you, essentially, if you just work and you lay the groundwork to remove as many residential properties as possible and turn the peninsula into a purely commercial hospitality haven, if you do that, the city, I guess, can make its money from just taxing, taxing these corporate entities and just creating the Confederate Disney World that they ultimately want. They want a Confederate um theme park. Um, and, excuse me, let me be more, um, more, more accurate, they want an um, an antebellum theme park. Right? So that's what the peninsula is supposed to be, right? And I'm going to go to Friends of Gaston Creek. Um, to go back to that TIF research that we did, and I got to switch to, I got to switch to the museums chat. Um, damn. Um, but it's just, um, your triplets, tell your triples to behave, Nicole, I see you. Um, I want to go back to the TIF district, uh, TIF research compiled by, um, and created by um amazing Pratt students. Like the, so if the goal was to create these TIF districts. Right? Using some of that language that we already lifted up in the um, in the, in the bid, in bid document, right? But if the goal was to create these TIF districts to essentially just create a purely commercial haven, was just hospitality, no residential representation, no real like residential property, like what, so just, the city just wants to get rich off of, wants to displace local businesses and local people in the interest of international interest cutter, international interest, these developers from other countries and um national interest. So they want to center their perspectives in the interest of all corporations? Is that the outcome? Is that the outcome for, is that what they, is that the calculation they're making, right? This is just showing you the racial, um, this is in 2019. Uh, right here, I don't spend less time on this part. It says has, um, they're just looking at certain makeups of, of, of certain census tracks, right? Over time, I've, I've lifted up this, some similar data points, right? So from 2019, black population uh has gone down. So before the census released the numbers, before, before it made headlines, our research team, I already had the, had the facts here. Shout out to Airman and the, and the, and the, and the rest. Shout out, shout out, right? So even before the news broke, we, we could track uh black population over time in Charleston. So if this is the desired outcome, then like, I just, I just don't know, right? Right?[1670.04] Um, you said Evelyn, this is, uh, that's definitely something to look into, I saw something. Yeah. Oh, no, no, we already did, we did that, um, Evelyn, we spent, I I I just look at the clock, we spent an ordinary amount of time on site C, yeah. Yeah, 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 you already said, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, yup. Yup, yup, yup. So, um, yeah, just looking at that, that's the, if that's the desire uh, outcome, then, you know, then hey, I don't know. Just to get rid of all the people, all, all the people that made the city, like, get rid of them, they have no say in this? Right? So yeah, um, Evelyn, we already, we read the article from the Gotham Center for New York City, we read parts of it, I'm gonna actually have to, I actually need to, um, oh, there's a book on it. I have to see if this, this is available somewhere, okay? Business Improvement Districts and the contradictions of placemaking, I hate placemaking, this is why I hated Enough Pie. Oh my God, Jesus. And people get mad at me because it's like, oh, Enough Pie is harmless, no, really, not the way they was moving. Alright, let me get to the other part, right? So let's just, let's find some light and fluffy shit about the International Museum, let's just find some nice and fluffy shit, and then the article is just, it's Adam Parker, but it's, it's Adam Parker, but the people he quoted were, I mean, I saw Millicent Brown, and she been kicking them facts since. I don't know, we gonna get to it. Right? Um, behind the scenes, so let's just watch some fluffy shit from like a month ago. Let, let's just, let's just catch y'all up.
Began as an idea more than 20 years ago, it's closer to becoming a reality for the world. Tonight on News Two at Six, I go behind the scenes of the International African American Museum. Construction continues at the museum at Gadsden Wharf, where 40% of enslaved Africans entered the United States. The museum has 10,
What's the name of that wharf? What's the name of that wharf? I mean, somebody owe me a check. I'm the descendant of some white person who made a lot of money, y'all trafficking and kidnapping Africans. Okay, what's the name of that creek? Somebody owe me a check. Somebody owe my daddy a check.
Four galleries and one special exhibit gallery. One gallery is dedicated to a conversation about the Gullah Geechee people. In her first sit down interview since taking over as the museum's president and CEO, Dr. Tanya Matthews talked to me about turning former Charleston mayor Joe Riley's vision into a reality. And where things stand now, the $100 million,
I'm giving, I'm giving Ms. Matthews, like, I really do want to see more, but this article, y'all, let's go.
The project has 100,000 square feet of museum and garden space. The interior is more than a football field and a half long.
We are going to be one of the largest African American museums uh, in, in the country. The name of the museum is the International African American Museum. Um, it is the I am because we are, and I am just so excited about all of this.
Yes, we are all excited. Right now, the museum is expected to open in the fall 2022.
When you talk about expected openings, everybody starts wondering, well, supply chain issues, construction's still going on, are they having to deal with that?
Right, Brad, Dr. Matthews said the museum has been impacted as well, but she says they found ways,
It ain't, it ain't supply chain. Or let me say this, it ain't just supply chain. Let's see, there's any late breaking news about the story in the Post and Courier, let's see real quick, about the the museum, there's a lot of important, um, there's a lot of important, um, I don't know, hold on, let me see.
Developing news tonight, descendants of the former Vice President of the United States, John C. Calhoun, are suing the city of Charleston over his statue being removed from Marion Square last summer.
What?
Mrs. Riley Benson joins us live from Marion Square, where that statue stood for more than 100 years. Riley, some state lawmakers backing this lawsuit, and spoke to you tonight on their stance.
Is Catherine suing?
Yeah, good evening, Brenda, the lawsuit filed by two descendants of John C. Calhoun claims the city of Charleston broke a trust to display and protect the statue of John C. Calhoun when it removed it last summer, and now those descendants and some others are claiming or seeking to make sure the statue remains here in South Carolina.
It appears like we are just minutes away from the statue actually being lifted off of the pedestal, again, a place where it stood here in Marion Square since 1896.
Standing more than 100 years, more than 100 feet above Charleston, the John C. Calhoun statue,
Bye bitch.
Brought down last summer amid a nationwide examination of historic racism in our nation's history.
Charleston's dignity has been harmed and will be further impacted if Calhoun statue is displayed.
You just can't make him a wonderful person.
Two descendants of Calhoun among those suing the city of Charleston.
I don't know who she is, I forgot, she's on that history commission, but that was, you can't make him into a great person. Yeah, I don't give a fuck if he was your great, 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 great grandpappy, I don't give a fuck. He was a horrible person, I don't know why, like, like, come on, shit the, just sit down, have several seats.
Charleston, they say, for failing to protect the statue, State Representative Lynn Bennett and others say they agree.
There are lots of people across the state unhappy with what has happened with this Calhoun.
Can we get Lynn Bennett out? Can we get her out? Is anybody trying to run for her seat? I don't know, am I being coy?
Statue, now I know the mayor doesn't like it, that's fine, he doesn't have to like it.
City leaders now considering shipping the statue to be displayed in a California museum. State Rep. Bennett and others threatening to withhold state funding from the city if the statue leaves.
Is there a rising star within the Democratic Party that could like, take that lady's feet? I don't know, is she in the chat? Oh, hey, hey. Oh, Michelle, hey, Michelle, how you doing? How you doing?
South Carolina.
Exactly what it is, it's a woke crusade. You know, this man is a very important part of our history.
Bennett also says the city has lost its authority of the statue since it violated the agreement. She thinks Calhoun's family should decide what comes next.
The family wants it back, the city's violated the trust with the family who gave it to the city, I want the family to sign.
The future of John C.
Oh, was it gift? I'm all about re-gifting, it's the holidays, I'm all about re-gifting, I'll take, shit, I'll take your Roomba and give it to my mama. I will. I'll take your shitty ass statue and give it to LAX, or give it to the, what is it, art, what is it, not LAX? Is it LAX art? I didn't think it is. I'll, I'll give it to them, oh, yeah, that's what the holidays about. It's like that, it's like that episode of The Office where they do Secret Santa, and Michael don't like Secret Santa, he like what he get, so he gave, he made these arbitrary laws, these rules. I don't, I don't want the, I don't want the pot holder, I want the iPod. I don't want this.
C. Calhoun statue remaining up in the air, much like the statue of the former Vice President and defender of slavery stood for more than 100 years.
And if the mayor doesn't want it in the city of Charleston, there are things that can be done with it privately, but he doesn't need to be shipping it out of state or trying to destroy any more of it.
Now, of course, we did reach out to the city of Charleston, they say they don't comment on pending litigation. We also reached out to the organization financially supporting this lawsuit, they declined to provide comment tonight.
Who are they?
Now, what is unclear is whether or not this lawsuit will impact an expected,
Riley, why didn't you say who the organization was? Maybe it's in the copy.
Should vote next month by Charleston City Council on whether or not to send John C. Calhoun statue to a museum in California. For now, reporting live from Marion Square in downtown Charleston, Raleigh Benson, count on two.
Maybe on the, maybe on the website, they have copy for it, I don't have time to look into it because we want to stay on, on the International Museum. I just wanted to see if there was any, there were any clips, because this is a visual platform, so I wanted to make sure there weren't any clips about this story, it was a Post and Courier story, it is a Post and Courier story. Um, shit, I done fumbled everything that I want to talk about, so we, this is a story, I read this this morning, after it broke yesterday, and I, I shared it in the stories of Instagram, and I said, we been new. We been new. Yeah, this is interesting, yeah, I was reading this, um, I was reading the sports section, I never read the sports section. Alright, so, um, yeah, that's the Post and Courier, let me see. I'm gonna go back to the front page of that Post and Courier. Oh, God, come on. I'm tired of mention, I'm just tired, I'm tired of Kamala Harris, uh, oh, I'm hustling backwards. I'm tired of Kamala Harris, I'm like, okay, Omicron 73, this is the front page of today's paper, right? Um, trying to see this, here's, and so here's the story here. Memo, morale staffing problems plague the International African American Museum, right? So ex, ex-planning director who was fired by the current, um, I believe ED. I don't, I got, we'll read the story to get all the titles correct. Um, again, this is written by Adam Parker, preeminent black voice in Charleston who happens to be a white guy. That was shade, yes, it was. Alright, preeminent black voice, alright, um, memo, morale staffing problems plague the International African American Museum. Ex-planning director Chu expresses deep concerns about leadership, diversity, and toxic environment. Let me tell you something, when old girl left, I was kind of like, okay, I was like, who's this Chu person, when, when she assumed her role? But when she, oh, this memo? Oh, no, wrong. This memo, this memo, this memo. Yeah, I saw that too, Kia. Eight, uh, uh, to, to this point, I don't want to get distracted, Trump hates a black woman, a smart black woman. Trump hates, that's why he always has those coons like Diamond and Silk and Omarosa. You know, he, he, he hates a smart, beautiful black woman. Trump, like, that, something about black women get under his skin like, like I've never seen, like, and he always calls them dumb. He always calls black women dumb, impunes their intellect in some way, but let me stay focused. Right? The International African, and actually, I read, I got it from the library, and it was better to read it this, nah. Let's see. See if I still have it up. It's easy to read plain text. Nope, I must have closed it out. I am awesome. Alright, wait, hold on, hold on, no, you didn't, you could, come on, give yourself more credit, give yourself more credit, did you, did you? You did, you closed it out, okay. Alright, okay, Jim. Alright, here we go. Let's read it here. Alright, International African American Museum, struggles with turnover morale, yeah. Alright, the international, I'm gonna read it again, sorry. Uh, the International African American Museum's former Director of Planning and Operations has sent a blunt warning to the institution's board members about numerous problems that could impact its opening planned for late 2022. In a lengthy memorandum obtained by the Post and Courier, which, uh, which was first sent the executive, sent to the Executive Committee back in November, so the memo was sent to the Executive Committee Committee back in November, likely during Meekness, right? Alright. Then to full board, then, then the memo went to the full board, right? Alright, Bernice Chu expressed deep concerns about staffing, leadership, diversity, low morale, and a toxic and soiled work environment. Her memo lays out problems that for years, some insiders have whispered about. Yup, and so they, I think they link it to their previous, previous stories here. Right? Sacred ground, Charleston's International Museum has big plans, and I think he probably included Millicent's, um, uh, Millicent Brown's comment in here, but we're gonna stay focused here, we're gonna stay right here, alright? It hasn't really even been whispers, right? So, full disclosure, um, back when I was on the radio, um, Millicent Brown and others, uh, sent me, I'm trying to find, huh. Sent me a, uh, would send me information. Uh, and I think I thought I had it pulled up. Hmm, I must have closed that too. Alright, I'll pull it up, it's, it's in my email, I'll pull it up. Um, let me see if it's, hold on, let me see if it's over here behind my screen. No, I don't want to play around, I don't want to play around. Alright. So there's been whispers for a few years, in the past two and a half years, at least seven staff members or contracted employees have left the organization, let me read it again for emphasis. In the past two and a half years, at least seven staff members or contracted employees have left the organization. Three since Tanya Matthews was named Chief Executive Officer. Okay, so she's CEO, she's CEO, not, not ED, she's CEO, museums are different. Okay, so, so three people have left since Tanya Matthews was named Chief Executive Officer in May, including Chu. According to the memo, Chu's contract was terminated by Matthews on June 8th. But Chu was asked by members of the Executive Committee to return. She agreed, but then she left the position in November. So she, her contract was terminated by Matthews, the current CEO of the museum, on the 8th. Her contract was terminated on the 8th. The Executive Committee said, no, 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 come back, we want you back, she came back, and she left by the 15th. Right, the 8th of, um, June, June 8th, okay? It says, it has, it, so this is what this, this Asian woman is saying. It has hemorrhaged prominent black scholars and professionals, and is becoming a known racist and misogynistic organization? I know she ain't black, I'm letting her up.
Fucking bars, nigga, you know nothing about that.
She said, this is huge, she said that this is becoming, she said it has, it has hemorrhaged black, prominent black scholars and professionals, and is becoming a known racist and misogynistic organization. The museum, y'all, the museum. The museum is racist, is a racist organization. You understand how, like, seriously? In quotes, Mayor Riley, the I A A M's support, and I A M supporters and local and global communities deserve, I don't know about that, so that's where you lose me, Mayor Riley don't deserve shit, he already got what he deserved, he got a whole, he's enshrining himself all through, he's, he's, he's memorializing himself all through the city, we good. M U S C, the bigger the footprint grows, that's a monument to Riley. When that stadium, that River Dog Stadium sinks, that's a testament to Riley. Um, when all of Charleston sinks, that's Riley. So I don't want to, like, anyway, sorry, I had to just put my own personal shit in there. But, um, the people do, like they said, the local and global communities deserve much better, I agree with her on that point, right? Right, this is crazy. So, look, look, Chu, a respected museum, and this will also make me pump my brakes, I'm like, oh, I mean, I'm like, because I thought that perhaps they would find these, these amazing, um, and, and look, being Asian or being a non-black P O C does not disqualify you from having a high ranking position within the museum, I am not saying that. But I was looking for key hires, like some really like, as someone, y'all know, whenever I go on vacation, I run to the museum. I'm a museum nerd, I run to the museums, I run to the art institutes, I run to whatever it is. It could be on the campus of CUNY, it could be the, you know, it could be, you know, in, in, in Manhattan, right? Whatever, big muckety muck, metropolitan, whatever, whatever, right? I'm a museum nerd, alright? And so I was just looking for some of those faces and people that I've often brought to y'all, especially when looking, looking at the success of the 1619 Project. And it's so funny how the city is trying to distance themselves from like certain, that's like a, that's like a, uh, you can't really talk about 1619, it's been politicized so, so, so badly, but like, they're distancing themselves from it, but they really do need to emulate um, the 1619 Project, from the New York Times, not a, not a museum, but the voices they enlisted, these heavy hitters, of course, they weren't just all black, right? There were other contributors to the 1619 Project that were not black, were not descendants of the enslaved, were not African, were not of the diaspora, the diaspora. But, um, but even within the 1619 Project, you saw them enlist so many amazing scholars and minds, and I was waiting for that to pop here. But Chu is like doing your research, when you do your Google, when you do your Googles, Googles, you'll see that Chu is really respected, right? So Chu, um, a respected, and I hope I'm pronouncing their name correctly, is a respected museum professional who is tasked with overseeing the I A A M's build out phase. Um, alleged that too many women have left the board and staff, partly because their voices are not valued sufficiently. And talented black women such as Brenda Tyndall and Joy Bivens recent, um, received inadequate support, though both are, were capable of becoming CEO. So she's saying that you could have promoted from within before looking outward to, um, to bring in Matthews. So this is probably, she and Matthews had mad beef, you can tell right there. Right, yup, P, um, D, Millicent been saying this forever. From the, from the word go, D, from the word go. Right, 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 yeah, Riley is part of misogynistic, um, and racist culture, yeah, exactly. But, but I get what she was trying to, I get, I get, I get, like, when people sit down with Riley, he comes off as just like, you know, Orville Reddick, Reddick redeveloped, like, he's really like affable, like, oh, shucks, bow ties, and he's older, and you know, I mean, like, you see him at the, you see him at the, one of the diners, or, you know, uh, not Early Bird, what's the other diner? That's everywhere, that's a chain, local chain, you see him in the diner over there, and like, you know, it just, eh, right? So she's here saying that there's black women such as Brenda Tyndall and Joy Bivens who, um, received inadequate support, though both were capable of becoming CEO. The organization's staff and board, though committed to interpreting the African American experience generally, has become more white.
Now, listen.
She's saying it's become more white.
Now, listen.
This, okay, I'm gonna switch, I'm gonna switch the camera, because I'm gonna say this, and I said this, East Bay, East Bay deli, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not a diner, it's a deli. I said this during the, the, the Black Business Landscape, when Brandon was on, and I said it again, I think, uh, yesterday. This is just an event space. Put me wrong, I want to set up one of those tables, I want to be that meme. This museum is just an event space with some blacky-black, black artifacts. That's it. So it don't matter if, if the leadership is black, it don't matter. It's just an event space, y'all. They don't care if they do this right, even, and like, like, this, they don't care, it's just an event space. Think about the weddings. Think about, think about how the aquarium is used, like how, their various revenue streams. This is just an event space, right? I just wanted to say that, with the camera on me. Come on, let's go, because, because we, we even get to the good part, and it's a long article, I know I wasted, I wasted, I know I spent a lot of time on the biz because it's important, it's, it's, it's time sensitive. Um, but, uh, so yeah, organization to board, board, become more white, Chu said, and protecting problematic staff members because they are black, ooh, ooh. Oh, but when I say it, I hate black men, when I say it, I'm a problem, when I, yo, shout out to all the black men who told me, um, that other black men don't like me, I love it, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, because, because they are black, right? So protecting problematic staff members because they are black heightens morale problems, she added. This is how you leave a job, y'all, this is how you leave, this is how you quit, this is how you, this is how you quit. Bernard Powers, I'm a reserved comment, Bernard Powers, a historian and board member who served as interim CEO after Michael Bullware Moore left, still trying to figure out why he left in 2019, but his job was to raise money, he was a fundraiser, and, and essentially, I'm sure that fundraising is, is probably through the roof. Like, I don't think the fundraising has stopped for this thing, I think that that's probably okay. Alright, so Bernard Powers, a historian and board member who served as interim CEO after Michael, um, Michael after Michael Moore left in August of 2019, says startup organizations, this name is start, startup organizations often experience growing pains and changes. Boy, please, you need to stop, you know better than that, Bernard, come on. All right, it is not, he went on to say, it's not unprecedented for museums to deal with controversial subjects. See, see, that's the thing right there. See, now this is where I'm gonna say some shit. Salute to the guys, salute to Bernard Powers for all of your historical credentials and all that, and how you move in the space, you show up on C-SPAN, yada, yada, yada. But when you talk like this, I just, when you work with the cops, the way you, I don't know. I don't, I'm not liking this. It says, it's not unprecedented for museums that deal with controversial subjects. What's controversial about, what's controversial? We gotta change the way we talk about our history. We gotta change the way we talk about black survivorship. We gotta change the way we talk about black historical memory, black historical memory, or historical memory that includes the African diaspora. We gotta stop with that. It's not controversial. It's not controversial. It's overdue. It's overdue. The Charleston should have been the first to have a museum of this ilk, of this making. Should have been the first place, right? But Chu, who is an Asian-American, a trained architect, listen to this part, who was an Asian-American, a trained architect, and who manages museum construction projects, this woman got credentials. She manages museum construction projects and operations, right? And a veteran of the Art Institute of Chicago, I just went there, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, just went there, right? And the New York Botanical Gardens, and James, the, and James Museum of Western Wildlife Art in St. Petersburg, Florida, has insisted the problems confronting the IAAM are not typical, right? So she's contradicting what Bernard Powers was put out there to say. And you see, when the institutions know they're up to some bullshit, they'll put out that affable black face that'll do its bidding. And I'm telling you, I'm begging with y'all at this point, please stop playing janitors for white nonsense. Please stop cleaning up their shit. If they want to go out there and make a comment, let them go out there and make a fucking comment. Stop fucking playing janitors and maids for this shit. Stop signing up for Southern Charm, stop signing up for all this other bullshit. Like, stop being janitors. You out there looking crazy, she got, she got all the Carfax right here, and you out here saying, nah, it ain't that big of a deal. It is a fucking big deal, because a black woman told me this two years ago. And then before that, she was having that conversation years before that. So stop telling me that it ain't a big deal, Bernard, when it is a fucking big deal. And stop be out here being Mr. Fucking Uncle Ben for these white-ass motherfucking boards. Stop. Stop. Like, no one's forcing you to do that. Like, stop doing it. This isn't typical. This woman said, look, no, she doesn't know my dude, no, 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 no. I used to work over here. I used to work over there. I used to hold it down right here. North, south, east, west. This ain't typical. Like, I hate when we do that shit. Stop being a janitor. Come on, she knows her shit. Tired of women being like excused and dis, like, come on, and that's what they do. They find that one black, hey, can you go ahead and talk to Adam Parker's, he's sniffing around, he got his hand on the memo. Yeah, 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 he asked some pointed questions, something along the lines of this. Can you just go out there and just kind of like, you know, you know how hard we've worked with Bernard, yeah, 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 yeah. You know how important this project is, and, you know, for 40 years, I gave you so many, I'm imagining Riley talking to Bernard Powers, for 40 years, you know, I gave you so many jobs and so much spotlight and, can you just go out there and just tell them that ain't nothing to look at here? Oh, show, show, boss, I got you, I got you, boss, okay? Let me go out there and say, I'm sorry, that's just how I feel, that's how I feel. No shade, but shade. All right? So she insisted this shit is not, is not normal, right? So she, I'm glad that Adam included this. For all the bullshit I give Adam, this was important to include, right? Veteran of all these institutions, she insisted these problems they're confronting are not typical. Staff turnover, for example, already has sent discreet signals through the museum sector, she wrote, all right? Right? During the latest campaign, excuse me, during the latest campaign to hire new CEO, the headhunter spoke with, it's not, I don't know why I said it with so much emphasis, I'm sure they use the headhunter to find candidates, qualify candidates. All right, the new CEO, the headhunter spoke with staff members and confirmed, so the headhunter even confirmed this with the staff, Bernard, all right? So the new CEO, so during the last campaign to hire a new CEO, the headhunter spoke with staff members and confirmed the problems with the organization was the dysfunction of the executive committee and the board, Chu wrote. So let me take a pause there to both read your comments in the comment section and look at this board again. Okay, so what y'all saying in here? Dee, you said, so in other words, other folks in the museum sphere are also aware of the bullshit. Oh, absolutely. What Australian folk would say, I love it when you identify the problems. That's not an issue, like, huh? Like, maybe it makes sense. Evelyn, you said, this is why Charleston is so insular, when people, come on, come, when people, exactly, and I get, like, so from a black perspective, I get why we are, I get why we tend to be leery, and even when it comes to people like me, I don't have a local accent, I'm born and raised in Jersey, you know, all of that, right? I understand when people are even leery with me, because it comes out of a place, comes from a place of protection. I'm talking specifically culturally, right? And black, I know that's why, I'm still earning people's trust, and I'm still earning people's buy-in, right? Right now, that's already, but, so some of that can be because, you know, black people trying to protect themselves from the buckra, try to protect themselves from buckra supremacy and all that other shit, right? But, but like, the other thing is that a lot of that carries over to the larger, the way folks do business, the way people engage artists, the way people engage creatives, the way people engage ideas, like, new and innovative ideas and thinking, that shit, to Evelyn's point, is so fucking, like, oh, no, 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 there's only one way to do it, and it's like this, like, it's so, it's kept so close to the vest, and no one else has access to these spaces, no one else has access to the decision-making, and they just keep freezing you out. And so when you do enlist, when you do enlist the acumen, when you do enlist the services and the expertise of a Chu, of a Ms. Chu, and they can't even, like, survive it, you know it's not Chu's fault, it's Charleston. And it pushes, it's so hostile. I tweeted something yesterday that, that I don't know if people, like, agree with it or not, I don't really care, but I got tweeted something like this, half this shit is about attrition. Real rap. This feel like Hunger Games shit, some, half this shit about Charleston is just being able to survive, and so you could say, even though that's not a huge goal, that's not really a great goal, just to survive like a fucking cockroach, but, but half this shit is attrition because they will continue to be hostile to you and try to push you out. You're not gonna push me off. You're just not gonna, I got land here, so I'm definitely not going nowhere, right? Half this shit is attrition, but let's look at this board. So this is staff, this is Dr. Tanya Matthews, who terminated the contract of Ms. Chu. Oh, shit. Oh, I see it. I see something. Shout out to Demet Jenkins, I don't know Martina Morale. It's cra, okay, Joshua's on there? Okay. Joshua's from Low Country Street, that's interesting. I ain't, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that. That's interesting. I'm glad he's on there. I hope he's challenging systems. Did Low Country Action Committee say anything about this? Hopefully they didn't take up for just, they didn't take up for Matthews blindly, because that would just really speak to some, I'm not saying they did, but hopefully they're not just coming out here. I didn't know he was on there, okay. Shout out to me, I don't know this guy. I don't know a lot of these people. Let me see if I can recognize the names. Y'all recognize the names? Who's Angel Pendergrass? I don't know, she's in accounting. Martina Morale, who's that? I don't know who that is. Carlos Guzman Gonzalez, I don't know who that is. CFO, I don't, I don't know who that is. I don't know who James Bartlett is. These are like the curators they brought in from outside. We know who Jenny is. John Anderson, who's that? Yeah, I know, I know Demet Jenkins. I don't know. Sarah Rafferty? Letitia Watkins? Assistant to Dr. Matthews, so, okay. Cutorial, excuse me, curatorial, because they're curated, curatorial assistant. I don't know that person either. This name sounds familiar, Verine, for now. Hmm. Let's go back to the board of directors. Okay. Jesus Christ. Mayor Benjamin, Dr. Tamara Butler from the Avery, Dr. Emory Campbell from the Gulliver Heritage Consulting Services. Reverend Isaac Holt, Jonathan Green, of course. Carolyn Murray, Bernard Powers, Mayor, Developer Riley, excuse me, I called him a mayor, Developer Riley. Keith Waring. Mayor Teklenberg, another developer. All right, National Advisory Board, and this is all the heavy hitters, Cleveland Sellers. Yeah, John Lewis Decease. Wonder who got that one done? Henry Louis Gates, Skip Gates. Felicia Rashad, ooh, she's on my shit list, after the shit she pulled at Howard and defending Cosby. Ugh. James Clyburn, David Beasley. Hmm, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know, something is fishy for real. Do y'all, do y'all know any of those people? Usual suspects on the National Advisory Board, yeah. But where's the, okay, that was it? That was the advisory board? Where's the executive committee? Is that, that's the staff? Is this? Staff, board of directors. But, okay, I don't, I'm trying to figure that out, okay? Interesting. And they really do bring on people who just could make the, make it look a little less white dominant. Or, you know, yeah. All right, let me get back to the article, all right? So CEO, headhunter, they, the headhunter confirmed the issues with the turnover, potential candidates in the museum world had already stayed clear. She wrote, like, the potential candidates in the museum world had already stayed clear, and the pool was minuscule. I knew that, right? As a result of the dysfunctional work environment, the museum risked compromising its mission and success when it opens to the public, Chu warned in her memo, right? She went on to say, museum officials have said they plan a soft opening sometime during the summer of 2022, pack a lunch for that one, and then a formal opening in the fall of 2022. All right, they are actively seeking an education director. Okay. Let's get down to Millicent Brown. Let me find her, let's get to her. Dr. Millicent, let me put some respect on her name. Yeah. All right? Heads up. And then I'm gonna go back to my, I closed it out already, we're gonna go to my email. I don't know why I don't just bookmark, I don't know why I don't just bookmark my stuff, I don't know why, every day I have to open up. Just bookmark it, me, good girl, just bookmark it. All right. All right, let me see. Let me see, Millicent. So back, back when I was on the radio? Back when I was on the radio, I was, shout out to Courtney Hicks. Courtney invited me to a little sit-down in Millicent Brown's home, and, Dr. Millicent Brown's home, and it led to, it was short-lived, but I was privy to the issues with the museum through this sit-down. And so what she did, I know you can't see it, let me exit out of that. What it led to was a conversation about the dysfunction, right? So it was a group that they've created that's still in existence, that's referenced in Adam Parker's piece, pardon me, y'all, the group that was, that was made up of, led by, led in part by Dr. Millicent Brown and others, and her sister Minerva King and all that, Citizens Want Excellence, CWE, or Citizens Want Excellence at the IAAM. This is postmarked, this is dated, this is timestamped. I received this email on July 23rd of 2019, July 23rd of 2019, right? All right, glad to have you in our, glad to have you and your network involved, it wasn't a network, but you get it, and supportive. We will add additional documents as they are produced, and we intended for sharing publicly. So she sent me stuff that could be shared publicly. Shout out to y'all who send me stuff that I can use publicly. Sometimes all that secret choral shit is just y'all preservant, like, some people just want to just, no-risk social justice, and that doesn't exist, that doesn't exist. Sometimes I get frustrated with just sending me stuff that I can't, I can't talk about publicly, but I appreciate this. All right, they have been submitted to the board. So she submitted to the board years ago throughout the community in attempts to bring understanding as to why the procedures and philosophy of the International Museum is out of touch with the community. This is back in 2019, right? And this is just a tip, this is just a portion of it, right? Now, what I do have pulled up are the attachments that she included in the email, right? That's not it. It's this right here, so they compiled their list of questions. These are, so for those who don't, y'all know who Millicent Brown is, right? And it's a damn shame, it's a damn shame that Millicent and Ms. Minerva aren't already enshrined. Like, what they've done, what they've led, speaking of Quentin's close-ups, it's amazing of what they've done and how it wasn't, I'm not Millicent Millicent, please stop giving this lady, y'all, please stop giving her attention, please. I've been very reluctant, please stop giving her, Millicent Middleton, please stop. I got some questions, let me just leave it at that, I'm gonna get crazy. So this is coffee talk, I want to try to get something that really encapsulates Dr. Millicent Brown's, yeah, let me see. Like, her work and her family's work.
During the 1960s, Charleston-
Let me see, well, the audio's a little-
Was a different place than we know today. Separation wasn't known, but was it equal? Was it right?
No, we're not gonna play that, it's just somebody's play about her, okay. I don't want to click on Quentin's close-ups, let me see.
Honoring Black History, sponsored by Bojangles.
Today, News Two continues our recognition of the contributions of African-Americans with a look at how children led the desegregation movement in Charleston. News Two's Carolyn Murray spent time with one of the students involved in a landmark school desegregation case. Carolyn?
Rivers High School was an all-white high school until 11 black students sued District 20 of the Charleston County School System to be admitted in the 1960s.
It's all ties in, walking history.
I spoke with one of the plaintiffs of that lawsuit, who explained gaining equity in education was not child's play. You remember your first encounter with discrimination or racism?
Absolutely, absolutely. One of my earliest memories was of how we accompanied as a child, I would be accompanied by a parent or one of my old-
Hold on, it's giving me fits, I probably got too many things open. Shout out to Fletcher's Art in the Back, if you ever go to, if you are ever going to Dr. Millicent Brown's home, I think, I think it's a loner, but shout out to Fletcher. This thing is massive, and it's just, it's, ugh, it's just breathtaking. Just wanted to lift that up.
Older siblings, and how we would have to go on the bus through the front door, put our money in, get off the bus, and then walk to the back door in order to ride. And I may have been three years old when that happened for the first time, but I'll never forget.
Dr. Millicent Brown grew up in downtown Charleston in the 1950s, overhearing local and national leaders talk about radical change.
People like Matthew Perry, Judge Perry, and Omega Newman, we had Roy Wilkins, Ralph Abernathy, Thurgood Marshall would stay with us. It was very important that our house was a safe place. It was a safe place for conversations, and so meetings were held.
Her father, J. Arthur Brown-
Folks knew that they could come and talk to my father.
-was a community activist and president of the Charleston Chapter of the NAACP.
In my house, with my parents, there was always talk of change.
Her older sister, Minerva, was originally the lead plaintiff in the lawsuit to desegregate District 20 of the Charleston County School District. But litigation in the courts was slow, and Minerva Brown graduated high school before the case- But litigation in the courts was slow, and Minerva Brown graduated high school before the case was heard. So J. Arthur Brown replaced 12-year-old Millicent in the nervous place as the lead plaintiff among 11 students.
There were rules and customs that we were a part of, just not going to accept anymore.
A seventh grader with no prompting or preparation from her parents, Brown made her case for integration before the Charleston County District 20 Board.
I don't understand why my school continues to get books that have been used and abused and, um, and tossed aside after white students have used them. There's something just unfair to me about that.
Millicent Brown et al. versus School District 20 became the landmark case for desegregation of South Carolina schools.
Because there were 10 other students who were also in that court case. There had been, I think, 15 students when it was in my sister's name.
He would have been-
Right, so I'mma pause it there. I just wanted to give some, like, for people who don't understand, you know, and I'm surprised that, um, Adam didn't put doctor in front of her name. Um, but maybe he does later, I don't, I don't know. But I, I thought that that needed to be, like, I wanted, there's tons of stuff on, on Dr. Millicent Brown and Minerva King, tons and tons. Um, it's, it's just, I wanted to go through something that's gonna give you a little bit of that, that background. Shout out to Carolyn Murray, because I know she plays a, a large, I know Carolyn Murray is, is, um, helps with the production of a lot of those segments that she leads, um, in and around policing, even in around, um, stuff like Black History. I know Carolyn uh, leads up those efforts and makes sure that those stories are told, right? So that's who Dr. Millicent Brown is. So she's quoted in Adam Parker's piece. Again, she's been organizing about the, trying to amplify issues about this museum for a long time, right? And I love what, what, what comes out of this interview with Dr. Millicent. This actually, I know time is long, but this actually is important, and I wanna kind of get through this. Millicent Brown, a retired professor of history at Claflin University, a vocal critic of the International African-American Museum, helped to start the advocacy group Citizens Want Excellence at the IAAM. She said she was not surprised by the concerns outlined in Choose Memo. Um, she went on to say, "It's unbelievable, it's unbelievable to me, excuse me, to me and always has been, that folks fortunate enough to find themselves in positions of decision-" Come on, come on! I might quote this and use this. Gavin took this picture? Who took this picture? Oh, it was, it was on file. I'mma take this picture, make this, make this content. It's a beautiful picture of Dr. Brown. Says, "It's unbelievable to me, and always has been, that folks fortunate enough to find themselves in positions of decision-making refuse to acknowledge the need to engage outside voices." Evelyn just said this. Evelyn literally just said this, right? Right? That, that hostility, that, that outside ideas and outside voices, outside leadership styles, the hostility that, that we face, I'm gonna put myself in that, that we face is astounding. And those who finally make it, when they get behind that door and they refuse to bring people in, like, that shit will always be, always be, uh, will always blow my mind, right? Always blow my mind. It's like you almost just accept, you're excited to be the only one in the room. And that's why the test is power. Very rarely is it money. It's power. It's not things and gifts. It's power. What will you do when you're in a powerful position, a position, position, position of influence and power? What will you do with that? Will you democratize it? Will you share it? Will you spread the wealth? Or will you hoard it for yourself and be happy that you're just tokenized, and you wanna be a janitor? For white nonsense, all right? So it said, "The problems with the museum were nearly inevitable, given its track record." It's not letting me scroll like I was. Why? Why? "Given its track record," here we go. "Given its track record," she said, "they are rooted in three basic issues." Listen up. "These problems with the International African-American Museum were nearly inevitable, given its track record," she said. "They're rooted in three basic issues: a failure to bring a variety of voices to the table early to define the museum's purpose; a failure to conduct a racial truth and reconciliation process before the plans were laid." Let me just say that. Let me interject with that. What that, what that says to me is, um, the RFP process. Now, I talk about how, um, my first job out of college was working for the Secretary of State of New Jersey. Um, and I told y'all, I think most recently, I told you about the sexual harassment that I faced while working there, um, with the slimeball named Rick that I worked for, right, or worked with. Um, what I did, and I told you that they moved me to the Attorney General's office. What I didn't tell you is that they moved me to the, to the Attorney General's office. I got to work for a black Attorney General, and she was amazing. She was amazing, and so was her staff. She, 'cause she knew, she was a real one. But she was actively involved in a disparity study. So I was a low-level staffer. So what I had to do was call up all these construction companies, call up all these contractors with the state of New Jersey, and ask them about their business. Ask them whether or not their business was black-led, women-led, yada, yada, yada. And I was just getting all these, these, I guess, these data points that would go into a larger study. It was very, very dense study. Like, I think I had physical copies of it in a storage unit, seriously. It was very, I was very proud of just being a part of that, that study. And why am I bringing it up? Because what that study went on to do was, it went on to, to say, to find out, to assess whether or not there was a disparity, disparity in how, how government contracts were doled out to black or minority-owned businesses or woman-owned businesses. And, and it also started off conversations about, like, what does that look like for the state to hold space for those who've been pushed to the margins the most? And so what, when I hear this second part of a failure to conduct a true, a racial truth and reconciliation process before plans were laid, I immediately think, okay, did they prioritize black vendors? Did they prioritize black and brown or POC builders? Did they prioritize black, brown, um, you know, just anything? Like, did you prioritize, did you give them access to contracts? Right? Because outside of this being an event space, this is also a way for, for city government to funnel in a lot of nonsense and to create a lot of no-show, high-profile jobs where you don't really do anything but look pretty on camera and, and do the mayor, excuse me, do the developers bidding, right? That's, so they, they use, they use the museum and its illustrious, um, I don't know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's reputation. It's still something that people are looking forward to. I saw y'all at the ribbon cutting. No, I didn't get an invite, but that was strategic. I saw y'all at the, and shout out to all my friends and people I work with who actually went there for, like, the ribbon cutting or to write their name on the, shout out to y'all. My, my name is already on the wharf, so I'm good. I don't have to sign my name. My name is already on the wharf. My name is already on the streets. My name is already in the creeks. My name is already, is all up and through Charleston. Charleston is my birthright. So the more y'all let me out of stuff, and I'm probably be the biggest, I'll probably be the, one of the biggest supporters of this museum when it, like, I'll probably be, I'll be giving some money. Let me just say that. Yep, I will be. Um, but shout out to y'all. So, so, but, but when, I don't know why I brought that, got all distracted, being silly. Um, but yeah, going back to this point, when I see the failure to conduct and stuff like that, I don't, I, I, I think immediately about who was prioritizing, not just for the jobs or the high-profile jobs, not just prioritized for the ribbon cutting, who, like, what, like, are, not, not just representation in terms of, like, how you, and, and, and was there an audit? Was there, well, not an audit, but was there any type of, hey, we're gonna address a lot of wrongs by, with this museum? We want this museum to do a lot more, right? All right, so, failure to conduct racial truth and reconciliation process before plans were laid. And the third point, a failure to escape, a failure to escape the paternalism inherent in most ambitious public projects in South Carolina and beyond.
Now, listen, that's called motherfucking bars, nigga. You know nothing about that.
Yep, I'mma, I'mma hop off soon, because I gotta, I gotta stuff to do. I just wanna tie this up. But yeah, so she lifted up this, uh, failure to conduct racial truth reconciliation process before plans were laid, and failure to escape the paternalism inherent in both, in, in most ambitious projects. And to that, you know, I keep lifting up Angela, Angela Mack, because I think she, she means well, but she's also a person that could step out the way. And like, and like, and so it's not enough that Angela is the voice of reason in the room and tries to bring a Tamika, tries to bring a Fletcher, tries to bring a KJ. It's not enough that we, that that's done. Also have to know that, hey, you know what? There's a qualified black person or qualified POC person um, that I could, I could give this space to, that I need to give this space to. Um, but there's, there's a paternalistic quality, even in, in that, there's a paternalistic, um, there's, paternalism runs rampant in a lot of things that I, that I excurriate, or things that I critique. Um, and that's a big problem here, right? All right, um, says, "How do you feel about tourists like me attending a museum when it opens?" Oh, no, I want us to. I want us all to, um, I want us all to open. I want us to go as a group, shit. Hell, yeah. And like, and really try to, like, enjoy it. I want, this is the thing, like, I'm, we're talking about the problems behind the scenes, but I want this to succeed. Like, and I think people don't understand it about me. I wanted to, now, there's some things that I don't want to succeed. I don't want Harry Griffin to succeed. I don't want, um, a councilperson who has a plantation in his back, in his virtual backdrop. I, I, I don't like that. And I will, I will challenge those things. I will challenge things that are, like, blatantly wrong and out of place. But no, and I think, I think, Joy, I hope you don't mind me saying this. I'mma switch up, because I do gotta dip. Um, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna dip yet, but I, I just wanna say this, um, no, I can't dip. I gotta show y'all something. Um, oh, shit, hold on. Okay, um, real quick, real quick. Yeah, field trip, field trip. Like, no, I want this to succeed. I, I really do, I really do want, like, I don't wanna go in there looking for shit that's wrong. I want it to, to, to do well, and I think we have to, like, people still don't get that, like, yes, I'm, I'm, so what I'm doing essentially is a lot of overcorrection, because I know what the, I know what, I know where we're gonna, where we're gonna relax to, right? So I have to kind of overstate some things. Now, I'm not saying that I'm prone to hyperbole all the time. Sometimes I literally punctuate things that are hyperbolic with, with sound effects. Like, I'm literally punctuating things with the sound effects, right? So that, you know when I'm being hyperbolic. Um, but you also know that I'm, I'm talking about such large issues sometimes that, like, there's no one livestream, there's no one protest gonna change these things. I'm just trying to kind of provide the overcorrection so that when the, when, when we regress to, like, the compromise, the compromise isn't too much. We didn't lose too much in that compromise, right? Same, so, so, so that's what I'm hoping for, is that I'm not invited to these spaces. Um, oh, so a reason why I brought up Joy's name is because I, I know, like, a lot of y'all have, like, kind of felt, don't feel, don't feel conflicted if you enjoy something that I don't. Don't feel conflicted if you enjoy something that I have challenged. Please don't. I want you to. I want you to support Quentin. I want you to support. If you feel like, I want you to do whatever you wanna do. Right? I, I just, I, I have strong opinions about Clinton and the role he's played, and, and I'm being, now, this is why I'm gonna be serious about the whole Quentin thing. It's not really personal. It's not personal. But I, but I've seen how the, the institutional forces have lifted that up as being the premier interview spot. And I don't think it's actually a well-crafted space. I think he's doing the best he can, but I don't think that he, he's equipped, and I'm, and if y'all think I'm wrong, just drop in the chat, nah, nah, you, you a little off. But, but that's my, my chief criticism of Quentin is you, you get to speak to a congressman and you, you, you don't seem as prepared. And I, and I'm not saying he's not prepared. I think he's doing the best he can, but it doesn't seem, the questions don't seem to be pointed. Now, I know you're saying, well, Mika, you misspeak, you read things. I'm not talking about perfection. I'm talking about, like, okay, all right, maybe, and, and at some point, you got this, you got this, this, this man running around Charleston, literally, y'all could see him running around Charleston with outdated equipment, which is fine. Use what you got. I used my iPhone when I started podcasting. But you got this man running around Charleston, and he's interviewing y'all in public spaces, and no one is, like, you know, investing in him, and so you're, you're legitimizing that, oh, he has to grind. He has, you know, and, and he's not stating what he needs. I tell y'all every day what I need, every day. This is, this is, this is a two-way street. I'm not just giving you. Y'all gotta, y'all gotta pour into me. And so when I see a black man not demanding more, not, not really calling for more, not calling for more, literally in the interviews, and not calling for more after years of watching this dude scramble, if I was still in my closet in Wamalaw at this juncture, I'd really, really question some things, right? And like, okay, I gotta figure this out. And so I think that's what my chief criticism is, like, you lifting up this thing that you know could be better, could be more refined, and not because he's not trying, but because you, you want it to be inadequate. You want it to look like, okay, I'm gonna help the young, I'm gonna help the upstart. You don't want it to be refined. You don't want it to be articulate. You don't want it to be this, produced. You don't want it to, to, to have, you know, equipment and, and all these other moving parts. You don't want that. You want to always have this, 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 this type of, so that, so, so that helps you understand, like, how I criticize everything. I'm just using Quentin as a standing for anything. You could put anything in there. It's like, it's like, so, and, and when we, when the Vanitas and the Greek Freak's wife and, um, that girl Bree, when they out here signing up for, like, reality shows, which y'all can watch, watch something, I don't give a fuck. Like, I'm not gonna watch it, but like, why, if that's your guilty pleasure, watch it. But when they show up on them shows after, they're only on the show because a white woman called a, a black woman a monkey, and the fact that they are excited to be on that, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna challenge that too. Does that mean don't watch it? No, I ain't never say, I almost did. I think I might have. I might be lying. I ain't never say boycott this shit. Like, very, very seldom times will I say, like, boycott, divest from shit. Does that make sense? Right? All right, you said, I think, you said, "I think I have the same concerns, which is why I wanted to acknowledge it with you." I appreciate that, Joy. You're great, you're great at lifting those who deserve it, yeah. And also too, with Quentin, Quentin does some bullshit within the black community we don't fuck with. And I'mma leave it there, because I'm a mixed community, I'm a mixed community. There's, there's a character issue there too. There's a character issue there too. Um, so you don't, you don't, you don't get to sit down with, with a powerful whip. You don't get to sit down with a gubernatorial candidate without making certain compromises. And, um, I, well, no, you can, but at that level of his production, you don't get that, you don't get that get unless something else is, 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 like, unless you're deemed safe. And why are you deemed safe? So that's my question right there. Right, right. You, you definitely watch to see how dumb they act. That's what everybody says, everyone says the same thing. And then, like, I just, I, it, it just makes me, like, uncomfortable. It do, it do. It ain't really personal. It's just, like, I see what y'all lift up. I see it. Once you start getting, winning awards outside the state for what you do, and your, your city don't even, like, act like, okay, did she go again? Like, well, then you, like, 'cause you, you're literally a gaslight yourself into thinking you ain't good. I've, I've literally fought through that depression, um, several times on air while I'm talking to y'all. Um, yeah, so, again, not trying to make it about him, but I'm just trying to have the conversation that, like, black people been talking about that. Shit, let's bring it back. Like, so, so just, just to just kind of do a little even dismount. Um, uh, watch this, watch this space about the museum. I think I hit all the points that I wanted to hit on the livestream from Dr. Millicent Brown and also from, um, Ms. Chu. Uh, and then the rest, it's a very, it got, it goes, the article goes a little bit more. Um, I'm looking at Tanya Matthews, like, is it Dr. Tanya Matthews? I don't, I really don't wanna be disrespectful. I wanna give you, you work for that. Let me see. Yeah, Dr. Tanya Matthews, I'm not gonna, I really am rooting for Dr. Matthews. I don't know anything about her leadership style. I just know that a lot of people believe in. But I know that the problems predated her, and the problems don't seem to be slowing down under her leadership, but it might not be all her fault. Um, it might not be any one person's fault. I, I honestly think it's, it's now, it's, uh, it's in the, the makeup of, it's in the makeup of, um, of, of how that, that institution came to be, and, and it, its intended purpose was never to be, I, I suspect its intended purpose was never to be anything but a big fancy draw to say, hey, look, look blacks, we put this all together. Um, and it's, it's supposed to be just event space, I think, right? Mika, my, watch this space. Yeah, ugh, okay. I'll get, I'mma love Rachel, because she said my name on air. I'mma say, I'mma take that as a compliment. Rachel did say my name on air, right, yeah. And not even professionalism, like, 'cause Dee, just, I saw that, you dropped in the chat, 'cause that, that could be a tentative white supremacy. I'm not, I'm not using white supremacist standards to, to measure any black creator. Um, but I'm, I'm noticing, I'm noticing that they like unrefined. They like half-baked. They love that shit. I quote bell hooks' all, y'all know my favorite bell hooks quote? "White supremacy worships at the throne of black mediocrity. They rather support a half-form vision than something that actually is like, oh, wow, this is innovative, this is different, this is, this is something else." They rather support the safe and the half-baked than, than, and then that, and, and I think, I think he deserved, I think any creator, I think all creators deserve, um, all creator, all creators deserve, uh, more resources. Speaking of, uh, local black media, I thought Chris Kaden- Chris Kaden just launched a, a morning show. I just wanna give it some love. show, I just want to give her some love. I think it debuted this morning at eight, I thought it was gonna debut last night. So, Chris, Chris has been very vocal, she has talked about her vision for having a talk show for a long time, and talk about somebody who's actually, like, Chris Kaelin is perfect. Chris Kaelin is a perfect example. Fuck me. Put my, put my, my, like, put me over here. Why isn't Chris Kaelin getting some of these interviews? Why isn't she being tapped? Like, she literally has a top-rated radio show, she literally is running through media, creating, she's been creating her own content since she was in undergrad, since she was at SC State. Right? Literally, her, her, her content gets millions of views across social media. And look at what she, I know this wasn't cheap or easy, I didn't even see it yet, I just saw the teaser. I know this wasn't cheap or easy.
My name is Chris Kaelin, and I would like to welcome you to my brand-new show, Diva Talk. My first guest is Dr. Kimberly Butler, here to tell us some information and to debunk some rumors about COVID. So, welcome, Dr. Kimberly.
I don't know why YouTube is playing.
Thank you for coming.
Dr. Kimberly Butler also spoke on, also led on the special commission, I believe that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's the holiday season, everyone wants to gather and be around each other, but how important is it to be vaccinated?
You know, it's so very important. Professionally, I'm Director of Community Health for Roper St. Francis Healthcare, but also Managing Director of Goodstock Consulting, which is a firm certainly situated in this space, because not only are we advocating.
So, Goodstock, it was a bunch of black women in the health and wellness space, help, excuse me, health, medical, not wellness, because that could be used loosely, but I love that, see, but look, but look at this, look at, look at this production value. How many camera perspective did y'all peep already?
For healthcare for low-income, vulnerable communities, but also making sure that healthcare systems are looking at disparities. And COVID-19 has shown a light for health systems across the world to pay more attention to exactly what's happening in our communities of color. So when we think about COVID and the holidays are coming up, y'all, it's so important to be vaccinated. Right now, I believe statistically, about 58% of the country have had at least one shot, about 58% are fully vaccinated.
Y'all look at this production value.
Right? We're on the right track.
We're moving along.
We're moving in the right direction, but lord, we are moving kind of slow right now.
I was like, we're moving a little slow. We're moving, but we're moving a little slow. A little slow.
Let me see, who else?
Yes, we have to be comfortable to.
I'mma mute it, just so I can just scan through it and just see if there's other guests. Look, Rashonda's on here. Shout out Rashonda. Uh, you know, she's on the board with Wine and Food, I think. Let me play it.
Been a spike in seeing the face behind the meal. So, were you able to benefit off of social media? And if so, how?
I did see a really interesting uptick in my website traffic after High on the Hog came out. And because, just the way I have it set up, a lot of people were searching for Gulligucci cuisine and Gulligucci recipes and things like that.
So, so, and shout out to Chris, like, Chris Kaelin, like, I'm not, YouTube don't like me like that. Chris Kaelin did a lot to amplify this last night, she did a lot, she did a teaser, she does a lot, and, and I see the ROI almost immediately on what she pours into. My point in saying this is that, like, so when I talk about black media, there's space for us all, we need Quentin. We need Quintons, we need Chris Kaelins, we need Micas, we need, we need, you know, what Mr. French set out to do, we need, we need Chronicles, we need all of it. There's room enough for us all, right? That's why I don't, I don't feel threatened by anything, I'm just, sometimes I'm perplexed. I'm perplexed by certain creators, but I'm, I don't feel threatened. So it's never from a place of hate or vitriol, it's like, come on, man, for real? So, but we need places for all of them. And so, I hope y'all are, I hope you all are non-monogamous, as I said last night, when it comes to, like, find what you like and roll with it. But, Joanie, to your point, I had to let a lot of reality, I realized that I was unintentionally not watching reality because of all the shenanigans, I just stopped watching a lot of reality. Maybe I just outgrew it, right? Right? Hey, look at the blacks. All right, so I want to flip it and kind of end it, hold on one second. Everybody's texting me and messaging me about Sykesy, I invited Sykesy on, they could've called in. Why y'all messaging, I don't know. I don't know why I get like that, hold up. Everybody's like, did you see Sykesy? Did you see, I'm like, yeah, I invited him on. They'll get here eventually. Not, not in a bad way, I'm sorry. So I just want to also, too, as I dip, before I dip, y'all know the fundraiser is going on. Let me tell you something, my goal, I said this at the beginning, the goal was to, I had a hundred, sell a hundred. More than halfway there in a week's time, less than a week, we got there. Shout out to Mackenzie last night, Mackenzie and Elliott, Elliott drove, Mackenzie hopped out, she did a pop-out. Let me stop, pop-out has connotations, if you listen to rap. She did not pop out with the Draco, uh-uh. But anyway, Mackenzie jumped out the, jumped out the car, and she said, look, I got, she called me before, she was like, look, I got blanks, I got blank, I'm like, what the, I was like, oh, she's got, she ordered the hoodie, so I'm holding in my hand. Not the design, he's not on it, it's a blank. But, a lot of people ask me about the quality of the hoodies that they're gonna receive, and, and because, because Mackenzie and Elliott do this stuff often, they could speak to certain things, and I'm gonna invite them on as well to talk, not just about my hoodies, but talk about their work. But she was pointing out, like, the quality of the hoodies, these are, each hoodie that y'all are pre-ordering is, in fact, a Champion hoodie, yes. And so, it's high-quality, it's really well-made, and it really, it feels good. I know you're saying, Mika, it's just a sweatshirt. It's a good one, it's a good one. It ain't just that, that one you get for $3 at Walmart, no. It's a good one. And the description of each item is listed, I know it's hard to read right now, it's listed on the website, but I wanted to show, maybe I should cover up my TV in the back, I wanted to show y'all the hoodie, and the color is very rich, so we ain't lying, it's very similar to what you see on, I know it might look different on different screens, it's looking different on my camera, but it's very, very, the emerald, it pops, it really does, and this is the reason why I'm showing this one. And the gray one is a little bit more heathered, it's heathered, it's a heathered gray, but the reason why I'm showing this one is because this one has been very, very popular. I want to say I apologize for the limited availability in sizes, this is a medium, and it feel a little loose. It feel loose, so if you order the medium, yeah, and Mackenzie's boo was gonna wear this, so Elliott was gonna rock this, so, you know, he's a man, if that helps. Duh, he's a man. But, yeah, he was gonna rock the medium, and I think he felt, I think, from what I understand, it works out for him, so I just wanted to show that one, because everyone is very interested in the emerald color. But, yeah, 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 yeah. T-shirts were, oh, yeah, the t-shirts are Bella Canvas, but the hoodies, I'm talking specifically about the hoodies. Right? And then the description of, you already knew that, though, that's why you dropped it in there. The description, the descriptions show you what it is, but the hoodies are, the hoodies are Champion, the t-shirts are Bella Canvas. But the hoodies is really what, that's why I'm showing the hoodies, because I really want, the hoodies are important. I wear hoodies, I wear hoodies almost every day on the livestream, the hoodies are very important to me, I feel safe. When I did the Women's March, I wore a hoodie, it made me feel safe, and I was running around with a backpack on, like, hoodies are just my thing, right? So, yeah, yeah. The link is in, yeah, you can go on Instagram, you can go on Instagram, the link is in the bio, if you got the newsletter, it's linked up there. Michelle, get the newsletter if you can, if you haven't. I can't copy and paste, but if somebody, cool, 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 thank you. But, yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to show y'all, it's pre-ordered, so, I didn't mean to throw it, but I just had, it's pre-orders, but I appreciate the support already. Again, Cassidy, you know who you are. Cassidy, you know who you are. Cassidy W., you know who you are, you blessed the shit out of me yesterday. The response, Holy City Tattooing Collective blessed the shit out of me this weekend. Y'all are not just supporting the hoodies, y'all supporting me, and that means a lot. I think I'm gonna pull up the newsletter as I dip. But, yeah, you know, check out the newsletter, y'all, I'mma try to give more businesses that have stepped up, more people, if they don't want anonymity, I'm gonna keep pointing them out as well, I think that's a component that I'm gonna try to introduce to the newsletter, is do more of a local, like, this is what they say, especially folks who stand next to me. You have to understand, if you ever say, Mika, it's so redundant, she says the same thing over and over again, she makes the same jokes about not being included over and over again, if you ever want to know where that comes from, it comes from people being very quiet and cheering me on in my DMs, but not necessarily wanting to stand next to me, either on mic or, you know, publicly, right? And I want to offer that support. And so, a lot of what you hear as a, maybe a tic, or, you know, oh, Mika, you say sorry a lot, all of that is informed by my lived experience, so I'm just gonna say this very gently, don't, don't always correct me when I say stuff. It comes from a very, it comes from a place of trauma sometimes, and also, like, if you hear me constantly talk about one thing, it's because it's connected to something larger that I probably can't talk about, and I'm not being shady or anything, but sometimes I just can't talk about, like, how people really did me dirty in, in, in real life, right? I could talk about, you know, James Smith, you know, goes to me after he offered me a job after I drove nine hours without any sleep from Philly to Charleston, to Mount Pleasant. I can talk about that, but I can't always talk about all the other stuff that kind of went wrong. But, yeah, so I'm, I think I'm gonna do, do more with just lifting up, shout out, shout out to the purchase. I'mma do more to, I appreciate that support. Oh, Michelle, dang, you really did do it, damn, that was quick. But I really do, I appreciate the support a lot, I really, really do. And so, when these local businesses tag me in things, or lift my name up, or just, like, go above and beyond, and I'mma say this, and then I'mma really leave, because I gotta take a nap. Thank you. I want to say this before, before I really, really leave, what was I gonna say? How, it's how I wanted to say it. Some of these local businesses and people are given way more than the millionaires that, and I know you said, Mika, don't do that, don't count, don't count, I'm not, but it's, I think what I'm trying, I'm not even doing that, I'm not even like, oh, well, you only gave, and they gave, but it's a testament to what we're talking about, when we talk about the giving project, right? It's a testament to, like, you don't have to go to the corporations, and usually when the corporations give you something, either strings attached, or it's like piecemeal, right? It's threadbare. When I tell you y'all locals, the way the locals hold me down, like, when me and Mackenzie were talking about, like, who to reach out to, I lifted up, like, now, there was some heavy hitters, too, their businesses, but it's the locals, like, it's the people who just watch. Y'all come through, like, yo, I, literally, I had to pay out of pocket for, like, a lot of shit, medical and shit like that, right? Where I didn't have to do that last year. When I tell you be bridging job financial gaps, y'all helped, like, it's the locals, it's the individuals, it's the people power. That's what's really been getting me through, that's who's been really supporting this, this fundraiser, is people. It ain't the heavy hitters that, you know, that, and the heavy hitters did share it and stuff like that, but it's the people who've given disproportionately more, if you look at that percentage, than your big mucky-mucks. And I'm, I'm just, it validates everything I say, but the people have the power, and the people are more generous, the people get it, and I really appreciate it. Yeah, 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 I appreciate it. Well, this was kind of like, I think some of this shit might come back and bite me, I don't know, but this was an interesting livestream tonight. Hang tough with me, come back, you can come and dip out, dip in, dip out, bring something to sip on, I'mma definitely have some po up. 5% alcohol, but po up nonetheless, okay?[1698.42]